All right, good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order, March 31st, 2022. Mr. Slade, do you mind starting us out with an invocation?
Let's pray. I would come before you acknowledging that we need your presence here with us today. We need your power. We need the sermon and wisdom here with us today. Father, I need these men, Lord, to be imbued with wisdom from on high, not the wisdom of man, but the wisdom that comes from you. Thank you for the power of your spirit, Lord, and you promised to give us wisdom when we asked. Thank you that you can give each of these men exactly what they need today to make good and wise decisions. Father, we are blessed and so fortunate in this community to have all of the incredible things that we have here, including men and women who sacrifice every day to protect us and to serve us, to faithfully carry out their responsibilities even at personal cost, and their families, Lord, that sacrifice. I pray that you would bless them, honor them for their service, Father. I pray that they would be protected today in Christ's name.
Great, thank you, Mr. Slade. Normally, we would jump into our planning commission, but I know we've got a full lobby of people, so we're going to just stay on the Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Slade, and go into public comments under item number three.
President, if I may, we've got, I think we've got a large crowd, and so what I would propose, instead of asking Ms. Sam to go out and give any instructions, let me step out and give a brief, limited instruction about public comment and ask for those who are intending to speak to confine their remarks to about a three-minute timeframe so that we don't end up here half of the day on this one topic. And also, I wanted to remind everyone here, and I will instruct outside as well, this is public comment. It's not public questions and answers. It's public comment. And so I'm going to attempt to ask that we make it a public comment if we're going to be up here and that we shouldn't address questions to the board or expect any answers from the board. Of course, the board has the complete discretion to engage and to answer any questions that may be asked if it chooses to do so, but the purpose of our public comment is to receive comments. So I'll go make those instructions and we'll get going.
Great, thank you, Mr. Slade.
Better, little bit better today. I was telling you.
It looked like I fixed the side saw.
Grab me the arm.
I got this one.
Don't touch that one.
How long been that thing?
I had no idea. Oh, it was, they had me in a big.
They cut it off across the chair?
Yeah, one day.
Was it labor issues?
Huh?
Labor issues, or what was it?
I mean, the ball joint was blown out, and I was worse.
You think it's more than you were laying in them?
Probably, you know, yeah. It had a lot to do with it.
It sure does, yeah.
But.
Hey, I'm gonna call that guy back and call him the storm.
Man, he was out of hand, Vice President or something. Good God, smart as hell, but he, man, he can't.
Is he upset by how they put the pipe in the lake?
What it is, he built a dock, and then they changed the pipe out, and he's very appreciative, and they've done a wonderful job and all this, but now the pipe is four inches higher. I guarantee you, he ain't wrong.
So the water level's gonna come up?
Over his dock.
It's almost really a, it's almost really an HLA issue, really?
He's over HLA.
Really?
Who did the work?
We did.
What, yeah?
They shot.
This all 4-7-1?
No.
In Buckingham?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's all family.
Yeah, family.
That's where we had that pipe that the developer put in, under the road.
Yeah.
Collapsed, so we're fixing to lose the roadway the same way as the dam over the lake. We had to go and change the pipe out. So I guess what's, what he's saying is can be put in four inches higher.
We did.
I guess, that's what.
As President, we are prepared to move forward with our public comment. This is the first item under public comment is comments regarding the medical marijuana law.
Sure.
The medical marijuana process or industry. We have individuals here who wish to address the board with comments concerning that matter. I'm asking for anyone who wishes to come and to address the board to step forward at this time. They need to give their name and address to the board, and then they will have a period of about three minutes each.
Sure.
And I'm going to keep a, I'm going to try to keep a time clock, Mr. President, to kind of keep us going here. So please come before the board, state your name and address, and begin your comment.
All right. We'll just take volunteers. Who wants to go first? How are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good. If you would, just come up to the podium and you can.
Trying to find it.
That's all right? You're right there.
You there?
Thank you so much.
You good?
I have some handouts which I.
If you would, if you would, tell us who you are. I'm sorry. Just tell us your name.
My name is Kathy Strand.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here with my husband, Jim Strand. We live here in Brandon. And on behalf of the citizens of this county, many of us are here to urge the board to opt out of the medical marijuana law that was passed back in February, signed by the governor. And I want to show how fraudulent and how misleading the law is and point out some aspects of the law. And I'll do that, but just, I want to point out, first of all, we would not be against this if it were truly about medication for children with seizure disorders or for people going through chemotherapy. We wouldn't be opposed to that. After all, I was actually blind by cancer as a child. I became totally blind at age two. So I know parents would do anything for their child, but pot is not the answer. It's not a medication. It's a fraud. The medical marijuana industry has managed to put a health halo over a drug. They want to normalize drug use, and I urge Rankin County to opt out and make this a sanctuary against this drug to protect the children and the youth of this county. The marijuana industry is an extremely powerful industry run by dark money like George Soros and Big Tobacco. After all, why would criminal rings be chomping at the bit to come into this state buying up land? Why would they do that for children with seizure disorders? Right there is a clue. It's all about money. And the legislatures themselves who voted for this can actually participate next year along with non-citizens. How is that medication for children with seizure disorders or people going through chemotherapy? It's a fraud. It's a lie. And citizens who have been promised that this is going to be a cure-all for whatever disease they have is the reason they voted for it, because it's a lie. Now, let's talk about the law really quickly. Who would have voted for this had they known that schools may have to dispense pot to their students? That's true. Schools may have to do that. It's not a prescription, but along with other prescription medications, schools may have to. Hospitals will be required to dispense pot to its patients along with nursing homes. What about traffic fatalities? They will increase. AAA did a survey with all the states that have legalized pot. Traffic fatalities go up. Think about your kids on the streets or your family or your wife. Crime will go up. That's why the sheriff of this county is highly against this, along with other police agencies. Crime will increase. Look at Oklahoma, for Pete's sakes. It's a disaster. Massive potency has been a problem. For instance, the marijuana industry, it used to be 1% potency of the plant. Now it's 20% stronger. The difference between a 12-ounce can of beer and a 12-ounce serving of tequila. Anyone can see this is powerful and not a good thing and not a medication. So again, this is a fraud. It's a lie, and unfortunately, the citizens are going to suffer. We urge this board to opt out and make Rankin County a sanctuary against pot for our children, for their families, and for the community. Thank you. God bless you all. I do have handouts I can give to the board that substantiate the lies and the fraud of medical marijuana.
Thank you for that. Right beside you is Mr. Slade, to your right side. He'll pass those out to us, and thank you coming in for your comments.
Thank you.
That's all right. Hang on to it and pass it down. All right, who's next? Anyone? Yes, sir. Come forward. Hey, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
If you would, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address.
My name is Joe Oaks. I live on 74 Woodgate Drive in Brandon.
Okay, good morning. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. I would like to make some comments related to how the state of Oklahoma has had dealt with this issue and the issues that came up in the state of Oklahoma. I get these notes from a TV station in Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's KOTV. And in their news report, they gave comments that the Oklahoma Bureau of Investigation gave them facts related to the issues related this to medical marijuana. They also interviewed families that were affected by this. And so the Oklahoma Bureau of Investigation said that Oklahoma has become the number-one black market supplier of illegal marijuana in all the country. So we know that opening the door for medical will also expand and further the illegal aspects of marijuana growth in sale and distribution. They got over 8,500 license grower, growing license in Oklahoma. I don't know how many we're going to have here, but if there's thousands, then the issues that apply in Oklahoma will affect Mississippi in a similar way. The Bureau of Investigation said that 25% of the growers are run by criminal organizations from places like China, Russia, and Mexico. Now, when you open the door for these foreigners, I, you know, I can't help but wonder if maybe it's Chinese communists, Russian mob, and Mexican drug cartels. But yet, 25% are illegal or criminal. The foreign interests that come into the state offering three to 10 times the value of the land or property to locate in the state, and they pay cash and they demand it closing within 10 days. So obviously, the criminal elements see the opportunity for cheap land, and compared to California and Colorado, Mississippi's got pretty cheap land. So we could expect that probably they're going to do the same here in Mississippi. The agent said that it's hard to determine who the true owners are and the operators because of the illegal operations they'll use of what they call growth owners or shell companies. And they will literally bribe people into, so that they would be legal, they would be the resident of Mississippi, but actually, the criminal enterprise is what actually runs the operation. And they, of course, say locating in near family farms and stuff. I don't know what the zoning in the county and what this county would do if it were to stay opted in, but the families that were affected, this is how some of the ways that they were affected, people that live near or next door to these growing facilities. There's a terrible chemical smell that makes it tough to breathe. There's screaming, yelling, bright lights, loud generators, heavy traffic, gunfire often at the facilities. The growers do not speak English, for the most part, at least these foreign ones, obviously, and they won't listen to any complaints. They'll just say, "The voters said it's okay," that they have a license, that the people want this. And then they said that these facilities have changed the landscape of the state, and they're complaining that the authorities will do nothing, and the politicians say it's the voters' fault because they voted for this. So I would urge y'all to vote, to opt out of this legislation.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate you coming in.
Yes, sir.
Next? Anyone? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good. If you would, just introduce yourself to the board and your name and address.
Sure. My name is Ryan Wade. I live at 604 Tree Line Drive, Brandon, Mississippi, in Cross Gates. Thank you for allowing me to address you this morning. I just want to say I did not grow up in Rankin County, but I have been a resident of Rankin County for 10 years, and I appreciate that very much. But I grew up in Leake County, and it wasn't long until I was a teenager I realized that I could find abuse in alcohol in Attala County. And so me and my friends, what we did is we found a way to get across the county line. And so one of the reasons I'm here this morning is I don't want Rankin County to be that place, that teenagers, other people who find a place who will abuse this medical marijuana, because it will happen. I don't want Rankin County to be the place that people are not only abusing in our own county, residents here, other counties are driving in because they know there's a place in Rankin County that can abuse it, just like me as a teenager. I knew I could go across the county line into Attala County and abuse alcohol. My first job was in Vicksburg as an engineer. I lived in Heinz County and worked in Vicksburg, and I talked with the residents, the people I worked with, about how the way Vicksburg used to be before the casinos came in. There was a lot of promises made about casinos coming in. Of course, I lived close to Philadelphia. The promises made there, and I see the distraught things that have happened from there. But there was a lot of talk in Vicksburg about the way it used to be before the casinos come in. I don't want us to be sitting here five years from now talking about how Rankin County used to be before we allowed this to come in. Then I took another engineering job in Madison County on Highland County Parkway, and I got to choose where I wanted to live, and I chose Rankin County. I chose to commute all the way, 30 minutes, to Madison County because I wanted to live in Rankin County, because there's two values that are very strong here. One is family, and the other is faith. Stayed here for five years, and a lot of stuff happened. God worked in my life, ended up becoming a pastor, moving to Pearl River County, which there's a lot of drug abuse down in Pearl River County. But I had the opportunity to come back to Rankin County five years ago, and I chose to come back to Rankin County for those same two reasons, because the values are strong here with family and faith. There's a reason the real estate prices are high all across our county. I've lived in seven different counties in Mississippi, and I can tell you that Rankin County is probably overall the most desirable county in Mississippi to live in. That's why the real estate's so high. But if we want to see that go down, we want to see families moving into brokenness and abuse. As a pastor, I deal with people who are caught up in drug addiction, people who've done abuse. I've come here this morning to say, in my remaining time, though, that I have talked with many people and done research. So not only do I think this is a moral issue and that people voted for something they didn't realize what they were voting for, I've talked with different people, not only in my congregation, but other congregations, law enforcement professionals, doctors, emergency room doctors, and pharmacists. They all have concerns about the abuse of this and the uncertainty of this, about how this is going to be regulated. If this cannot be sold in a pharmacy, why would we trust someone, if a pharmacist who's gone to school for however many years, if they can't sell this, why would we trust someone who's been to an eight-hour class to dispense this, a budtender, buying marijuana with names like Dream Haze and all these other things? Why would we want that and fight that into our county if the pharmacist can't be just allowed to dis-sell this because it's considered a federal requirement, say this is an illegal drug still? So I'll come behalf of not only concerned residents in my congregation, but again, those who are doctors, pharmacists, law enforcement officers, and just residents of Rankin County who are concerned about what this will do to our county. And once we open the door, there's no way to go back. So I'd ask you to consider opting out of this. Also, just want to mention one verse from the Word of God from the Bible in Proverbs 14:16. It says, "The wise are cautious and avoid danger, but fools plunge ahead with reckless confidence." I think we would be remiss to go against law enforcement, medical professionals, and others who are telling us this is not a good idea, especially with reports from other states such as California and Oklahoma. So I would also like to submit just for reference to the board, letters from three other pastors, two from Cross Gates Baptist, and one from Hope Fellowship, who couldn't be here this morning. But I've spoke with others, spoke with the pastor of Metagrove, I've spoke with other people, spoke with multiple people, and there are many concerns in Rankin County.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
If you would, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address, please.
My name is Carolyn Rains. My address is 519 Cliffview Drive, and I live at Reservoir. I've lived in this county 29 years and for a lot of the reasons, and I applaud and say amen to the comments that have already been made, especially by the one that led to the comments this morning. I have a tenderness for the law enforcement community. My small business is Biometrics, where we do the systems for background checks. We're an FBI Chandler. We work with them quite often, and we have many systems covering our schools and law enforcement and every health agency in the state, and we see the dangers here. Who in our law enforcement agencies wants to spend all their time trying to run down violations such as this? And I spoke with the legislator Tuesday, I believe, earlier this week, and he said this should have never happened in the state of Mississippi. And I'm saying, why can't Brandon, why can't Rankin County be one that stands out and says, "No, we're not going there. We're not putting this burden on our law enforcement agencies." And furthermore, I'm reading where they're mixing marijuana and the black market in all the states that already have medical marijuana. They're mixing it with fentanyl. Would you like for your teenager or your child to be killed or to die suddenly from mixing a mixture they've got at a vape shop, and that's what's happening in other states? So I stand with the law enforcement agency. I stand with the sheriff of our county, and I plead to you not to let this happen in Rankin County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
If you would, just introduce yourself, your name and address, please.
My name is Patricia McNulty. I live at 213 East Town Drive, right over here. And I thank you for allowing all these comments today. My father sat in your seat about 20-some, about 30 years ago.
Well, thank you for his service.
So I respect you guys, and you have a lot of hard decisions to make. I am here today in agreement with my friends who have already spoken, and as Carolyn said, I can say a hearty amen to that. But I'm here on a different reason, and for this reason, I'm sort of glad that my daddy is not still living. About 26 years ago, we had, our son was in school here in Brandon. Both my kids went to Brandon, and he was, he was like most likely to succeed. He was within the top 10 kids in Brandon. His IQ was over the charts, intelligent. I wish he could have gotten that from me. But he went to a church camp out of state and met this little girl from a very dysfunctional family, and she was into pot, and she introduced him to that as well as a lot of other things. And so eventually, I won't go into all of it, but her dysfunctional family became our dysfunctional family. And over the years, my son, he is a graduate from Mississippi College. He's a professional musician, traveled all over the United States playing. He was our drummer in our church for many years. But his life, our life, is no longer the same because he's been on pot, and I know he's tried other drugs. He has said that we are dead to him, and he never wants to come home, never wants to come back to Brandon or Rankin County. He, we have spent thousands of dollars on rehab and trying to help him in the past. We haven't seen him in about three years or so because he has separated himself from us. Pot changes people. It changes your brain. It changes your mind. There are medical reports that document that. And the use of this, these drugs has, is dangerous, and it changes families, and it affects families. It affects families in a real way. I know, and I am compassionate to those who say that they need it for medical reasons, and I would, I would perhaps be for this bill if it didn't hide so many things in it that they sneak it in there. And because I am compassionate, and I know people need drugs for things, I would qualify for marijuana because I've had five back surgeries, and I am in pain 24 hours a day, and I know what it is like. And my grandson has autism, but my daughter says she will not help him, and he has severe anxiety disorder. So we're choosing not to do that because my daughter does not have a brother anymore. I've lost my son due to drugs, and it's very hard and it's very difficult. And I don't have blue hair because I'm trying to be a cool old lady. My son has a, he has a blue mohawk, that that's his trademark in his music industry. And it's my way of being close to my son when I can't see him, and when I know I may never see him. But I pray, and I have hope and faith. Also, I am, I have worked in the prison ministry at our church for over 15 years, and I've prayed with thousands of women and men who, in their prayers, have said that pot started their drug addiction or pot was the beginning of, and was ultimately the reason drugs were in their life and why they're in there in prison. So it's a real thing, and it hurts people in so many ways. And also, the last, and I'll just say this, it's all about money. I mean, when you get right down to it, it's not about, to me, it's all about money. And for our city and for our county, I know we need that money. But, you know, I like Ryan just said, Rankin County is a haven. It's a beautiful county, and it is a haven, and I hate to think that we would be known as one of those places. Y'all, there's so many ways that our county could get money to function on and to operate on. And I will close with a, with a verse from Proverbs 2:7b. "He is a shield to those who walk in integrity." And I pray that you men will walk in integrity and think about the whole issue. And the other verse is Proverbs 10:2, "Ill-gotten gains do not profit, but righteousness delivers from death." So please save our county and make it the beautiful county that it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience that's here? Yes, sir. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
If you would, the same, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address, please.
I'm David Jeffcoat. I live in East Haven, 111 Richmond, Richmond Drive. And I just want to thank the supervisors for allowing me to come by here today and give my opinion. Like I said, my name's David Jeffcoat. I've been here in Rankin County for about 38 years, raised a family here, operated a business here, grew up in neighboring Scott County, so I've been, I've been around Rankin County just about all my life. And I just wanted to address y'all about this, this medical marijuana law. First of all, I believe it's good to help someone. I believe in that. I helped someone yesterday to Saul over in Jackson. We need to help people. I've been to hospitals on visitations before, and thank goodness, people's got some medicine to take when they in bad shape and there. They, people, people need help. So I believe if they need some help, give it to them. In fact, I'm a person, I believe in doing home remedies a lot of times. I mean, if it'll help, do it. But I believe this medical marijuana law misses the mark of being a true medical marijuana law. It's 455 pages long, but, you know, you can read over it. About the first 85 to 90 pages, you can get the gist of it. Some of the concerning parts of it that I've read over, there's no pharmacy involved with the distribution of marijuana and marijuana products, and marijuana contains a product THC, which is a mind-altering drug. Other things about it, others than a regular physician can write it. You know, you can have nurse practitioners, nurses, doctors, assistants, and optometrists write it. It allows for a lot of marijuana to be put out in our county. You know, it allows for 3.5 grams per person per day to have six days a week. And if you take that using the average marijuana joint, .32 grams, that would be like 11 joints per day, 66 joints per week. Then if you take the governor's example that he used out in Oklahoma, 10% of the population's signing up, you know, you could come out with, in Rankin County, like a million joints per month in marijuana, and marijuana being put out in Rankin County. And, you know, in just, just a few weeks ago, Rankin County deputies seized 200 pounds of cocaine out of here on the interstate, and then here we would be turning around, putting a Schedule I drug back out into the county. Allows for concentrates to be sold. You know, those concentrates can be vaped, and that's a problem, you know, something to pill into teenagers to use. And then that's a lot of, it's pretty high potency too on that. And then, you know, the higher the potency, the more likely the addiction from it. The law would just, this thing can just change. It can just grow on you because people can petition to have other elements added to it, so you can have it growing that way. Then, I tell you, sooner than this bill was passed, they was already talking about they could increase it in years coming, so it just moves them or just increase. And I know all this got started back when this referendum, but when we had. we had that. You know, that, that ballot was confusing. I have ran into a lot of people that says that was confusing ballot, really didn't understand it. And probably, and I'm pretty sure everybody when they was voting didn't know what all would be in this, in the law. And I just want to read something in this about the residency requirements, and this is in actual bill. And this is applicants for cannabis cultivation facility license and cannabis processing facility license. If a natural person, proof that the person has been a resident of the state of Mississippi and a citizen of the United States of America for at least three years prior to the application date. This requirement comes off at the end of the year. And I bet that's something that the average red-blooded American, Mississippian, when they was voting for this thing, if they known that was in there, they probably wouldn't have been for that. And this also has a residency requirements about business entities, and that also comes off at the end of the year. In this bill, it takes power away from the cities and counties, and I'll read just a little bit of, of that. It says, "A municipality or county may enact ordinances or regulations not in conflict with this chapter." So, you know, if you had a dispensary or something that was selling something that was causing problems, that was popping up, say, like in the schools a lot, you know, you can get the sheriff to send a deputy out there and ask him to, to stop selling that. Well, they don't have to. I mean, it just, it just takes the power away. And once the city or county gets it, you can't get rid of it, no matter how bad, how bad it turns out. So I'm just asking the board to look out for the citizens of the, of Rankin County, and do what's right, and opt out of this, and hopefully we can get the lawmakers to repeal this law, or either just make a lot of changes to it. And man, I appreciate y'all's time again.
Good. Thank you for coming in. Anyone else in the room? Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good. If you would, just the same process, just introduce yourself with your name and address.
Absolutely. Monica Baldwin, residence at 164 Woodgate Tribe, Brandon. I've been a resident here for 35 years. And I'm here simply to confirm what many people suspect, and that is that this marijuana legislation is not about compassion, but it's about money. A licensed application for a cultivation facility ranges from $1,500 to $60,000, and that depends on the square footage of the facility. In addition, there is an annual licensure fee ranging from $2,000 to $150,000. And this is not a one-time fee, but this is an annual fee. And not only that, but there's an application and licensure fee for cannabis processing facilities, cannabis research facilities, cannabis testing facilities, cannabis, let's see, there's two more here. Oh, it's the transportation entity and also the disposal entity. But what I want to, and it's already been said, what I want to focus on is that the dispensary facilities. This is not a drug that's dispensed through, written by a pharmacy, written by a doctor, through a pharmacy, like all other medications. This drug is dispensed through dispensaries. That there should be a flag just waving in the air wildly. That's very dangerous. So I would like y'all to discern, is it truly compassion or is it money? And how many legislators actually read this bill? Again, you heard 455 pages, Senate Bill 2509, but I guarantee you one thing, that those who did read it unmasked the deception, that, that they were illuminated by the light of truth in this bill. If allowed to proceed, this dangerous marijuana bill will open the door, just like our southern border, to crime, corruption, and ultimately, the destruction of Rankin County. So I want to urge each of you supervisors to be bold and to be courageous, and really to follow the lead of Brandon, our city, and our neighboring cities of Flowood, Florence, out in Ridgeland and Gluckstadt, to opt out this very dangerous piece of legislation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else in the room? Mr. Slade, that, I'm sorry, Judge?
Well, I just want to make sure if I'd said their piece.
Good morning, Judge.
I'm going to be very brief, because, and I appreciate what all these folks have done. I've heard all those arguments before, and they're well-meaning, and there probably some truth in all of them. I do love quoting scripture here.
Sir, would you give us your name and address?
My name's Kent McDaniel, yes, and I live up in Castle Woods. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Let's keep the record clear. And I got with me today Nathan McIntosh. Nathan is an emergency room physician who is on our board. I'm here to represent the Mississippi Cannabis Patients Alliance, MCPA. A lot of the folks have talked about compassion and those kind of things. So I want to make it clear at the beginning, that's what we're all about. We don't care if nobody ever forms a dispensary, or grows it, or whatever else. That's not our job. We want to make sure that patients who fall under this bill can find contact with a reputable person to give them the authority to have the drug, and that they can have access to it. Now, all we do if we, we blank out Rankin County is just make them drive to Jackson. You could be assured the bold new city will allow all of that that they care to have over there. But here's the point, folks, we're not, the, that ship has sailed. Initiative 65 is one of the worst things I ever heard in my life or saw, and I fought vehemently against it, for the same reason these nice folks are fighting against this. But that's too late. Our legislature has passed it, and passed it by overwhelming majorities. So the only choice really left is, are we going to have it? Yes, we're going to have it somewhere. Are people going to be able to get it? Yes, they're going to be able to get it. And so the, the only question really is, will we have them drive to some other area to get it? Now, I must have missed something. The, I've got a copy of the bill here, and it only has 425 pages in it, and it's possible there's apparently another 30 pages I missed somewhere. But the, the bill is the best piece of legislation I've seen, and I've been going to the legislature since 1971 to get things done. And this is the most comprehensive and complete piece of legislation I've ever seen. And I was down there when all these arguments were made, many of the same ones you've heard here today, to the Senate, and they still voted, I don't remember the exact number now, 44 to 5, or whatever it was. But the point of it is, we have an obligation to make this available to the citizens. We don't have to do it in this county, and we can't stop them from doing it in some other county. Let me say one other thing that bothered me until I read this bill and saw this. The sheriff and them have a problem, all the police departments have a problem. People have a tendency to burn a little of that left-handed debiker and get out on the road and try to drive. And that is an incredibly dangerous chance they take, not just with their own lives, but with others. Nothing in this bill changes that at all. The law has always been that if you're a hydrocodone user, you can't take that hydrocodone and get out and drive all over the roadway. That's been the law for every drug that's out there that affects your ability to drive. Nothing about this has changed. And I'll just tell you, my last couple of years as judge, I had a fellow from Florida, had him a genuine little shiny laminated marijuana card. He was a marijuana, permitted to use medical marijuana in Florida. And when he came into my court there that day, and it was obvious he was driving all over the road, and a danger to himself and others, he said, "But Judge, I can legally use marijuana." I said, "Well, you may be able to do it in Florida, Hoss, but you can't do it in Rankin County. That's all there is to it, because you can't get behind the wheel after you've been smoking your dope." All of that sort of stuff is preserved in here, and law enforcement has a right to protect us from people who would get out there and drive while they're stoned and so forth. Not, needless to say, with 425 pages, I could say a whole lot more. I just tell you that, that our organization, the Mississippi Cannabis Patients Alliance, is all about patients and making sure they can get this drug if they need it. And so it's, it's too late to try to undo the law. It's done by some of the, and right here in Rankin County, the voters, almost every precinct was over 60% voted for this, back in, when they had the initiative. Now, there was a whole lot of misleading stuff in that initiative, and that's why I preached against it. And the sheriff will tell you, I stood up in the meeting over there with all the chiefs of police and says, "You need to get your folks to fight against Initiative 65. It's going to put this in our constitution." You think it's hard to change the law? You ought to try changing a constitutional provision. So I very much appreciate the Supreme Court for doing what they did, and striking that junk down, and giving our legislators a chance to start what I consider to be one of the most reasonable ways to address the issue, which we all know, and that is, we need to have compassion for people for whom this will provide medical relief. And that's, that's all I urge you to do, is if you're going to think, even think about opting out, I'd be glad to come back and talk to you in more detail at a work session or something, go through all this in detail with you. But the point is, I appreciate these good folks who don't want it. Listen, I'm as proud of Rankin County and the judge here 24 years. We've got the greatest county in the state. And I don't see that opting out is going to change anything, or staying in is going to change anything, because this county turns on folks like y'all, and the citizens that elected you. And so I know you'll do the right thing. I just wanted, everybody else quoted scripture, I wanted to quote you one more scripture. I used it in my court a lot. Paleshiastes 10:19, look that one up. The preacher, Old Solomon, said, "A feast is for laughter, and wine makes life merry, but money is the answer to everything." Now, he was being just a little bit sarcastic. But if we ever lived in a time in our nation when money talks, we live in it now. So there's no question that the money behind this is one of the things that's driving it. And I hope that it, you know, doesn't drive it off the rails, but that's just the way things work nowadays in the world, and money will end up winning out in this argument. Doc, anything else you need to say?
I want to thank you, Senator. I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else have comments regarding the medical marijuana issue? Mr. Slade, do you mind just checking in the lobby to be sure we've hit everybody that's here? That I want to be sure everybody's got a chance to speak, that wants to speak.
The members are arguing that the room can stay seated, please.
Judge, yes, sir?
Would y'all like to hear from an emergency room physician?
If he'd like to speak, it's, it's definitely his option to speak. He's welcome to speak.
Okay.
Right.
That's every one.
Okay, I'm going to let the doctor speak. He wanted to say a few things.
Well, I'll make myself available. My name is Nathan McIntosh, 101 Harper Street, Ridgeland. I practice.
I'm sorry. I've never been to meetings like this. Can you speak if you don't live in Rankin County?
Sure. We allow public comments to come in and speak. Yes, sir. Yeah, we'd be glad. Here's the good thing over here. In Rankin County, if you want to come in and say something to our board, we open the public comments to anyone. So go ahead, sir.
Well, and I think the only relevance to the sir's comment, I practiced medicine for Rankin County for, for over 10 years, in emergency medicine. And so my specialty really is to serve anybody and everybody, regardless of what they have or where they come from. You know, that's just not something that I really care about. And I definitely appreciate everybody's personal comments, and kind of their personal experiences that they shared here today. And I hear that in the ER all the time, and how people connect those dots, and kind of making a, a decision or a judgment. And we take that into account when we're practicing medicine. You know, but, but when we're really making that medical decision management, and trying to figure out what is best for patients, we've got to use evidence-based medicine. And that's research and studies that's peer-reviewed and powered by population volume and a lot of other things that go into it. But in short, evidence-based medicine proves that cannabis is effective and a good treatment for certain conditions for certain people. I'm not here to advocate that it's a cure-all for everyone. And I think it needs to be available to anyone that does need it. And that's, that's really all I'm here to say. And if anybody has any questions about that. As far as medical support, and so, you know, in kind of response to a couple of things that I heard, some of these things occur regardless of the path of this legislature or not. I took care of a fentanyl overdose three days ago, the last patient. And sorry if I'm a little cognitively off, I worked all night. I haven't slept since sometime yesterday morning. But the last patient I took care of this morning was a lady that took about 20 hydrocodone and 10 benzos and drove herself to the ER. And so that kind of stuff is on the street, regardless of what happens here today. And, and the fentanyl, whether that's part of something that's happening, if, if medical cannabis is here in, in the county or not. And so that's a very unfortunate part of the thing that occurs that maybe a lot of people don't know about. But I do know that I've taken care of plenty of people that have used cannabis to treat their conditions and have a great outcome for it, not just because of the drug itself, but maybe even more importantly, and maybe why an advocate, because they have not been able to find a therapy or a drug otherwise to treat them. And I think that's why it's important to create access to care, as it is for any kind of healthcare.
Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate it. Mr. Slade, do you find anybody else outside that needed to speak?
There's no one else to, that, I call for anyone else to speak.
Hang on one second. I'm going to get you one second. Mr. Slade, hang on one second. I'm sorry. Mr. Slade, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank everyone who has spoken today and addressed the board. Thank you very much for keeping your comments concise and civil, and it's been very, very helpful for the board to hear this information. We're grateful that our citizens want to take an active part in their government. And so to answer the pastor's question about why we would allow someone who's from our county to speak, the, the reason we want to know where our, our commenters live is so my guys know whether or not they're talking to or hearing from someone who is an elector of Rankin County. It makes a difference for us to hear from our citizens. We're not as concerned about the opinions of citizens who don't live in Rankin County during our public comment period. So that's why we do that. We don't pretend anybody's speaking. We just want to know, are you one of my voters or not? So that's the purpose behind that.
Great. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I'll let you say something else.
Just one quick statement.
Yes, ma'am.
You have any thoughts?
Sure. Just come up to the microphone so we can hear it for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carolyn Raines.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just one quick statement. The majority of this county and its residents are against this. And we live here, and we tolerate it. And furthermore, law enforcement has its hands full already. And yes, in response and rebuttal to the Judge McDaniel, we do want them to go somewhere else and buy this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, we want the county clean, and not the sheriff's office and all the other law enforcement having to run all over the county and determine this and that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Slade, with no other public comments, we'll go to item four, which will recess us into the planning commission's meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The board entertain a motion to recess the board supervisors by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Thank you, Judge. Thank you all for coming.
Appreciate y'all.
God bless you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll call the order of the planning commission meeting. Mr. Renee, good morning.
Good morning.
Let me get my agenda out for that. So item number two under the planning commission, we'll consider the board entertain a motion for approval of minutes from March 3, 2022. Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light signs, and the minutes are approved. Item number three under old business, Mr. Renee, item number one.
Okay, so those two hearings were continued until the board meeting later on today. Did y'all need to review any of that, or?
Would you mind just touching it just for a second?
Okay, so the first one is for BG Capital LLC. It's a conditional use permit at 1123B Old Fannin Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to operate a laundromat in Suite B of the Exxon Convenience Store. It's a .96 acre parcel. It's Zone C2. These are their floor plans. And then this is the Exxon store, and that's the Suite B where it'll be going. And they're not planning on making any exterior modifications to the building other than signage. They propose hours of operation at 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily.
Okay.
And I think their representative is here today, if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Renee. Item number two.
Okay, so the next one is David Vincent. He's seeking a conditional use permit on Gablewood Trail. He wants to place a new double-wide manufactured home on this property. It's a 3.75 acre parcel. It's Zoned RE1. who is disabled and in need of assistance. If the application is approved, he will separate out an acre for the home.
Okay.
I don't think he's here today. He called and said he was under the weather today, so he wouldn't be here. That's the site plan. He has a home on that property already. This is his home. And then these are- that's where the new home would go. And then these are surrounding properties.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Renee. Anything else under old business?
That was it.
Those two items. So we'll move to item number four, new considerations. Ms. Renee, number one. Mr. Vincent.
All right. The first item is a rezoning request for Mark Vincent on White Road. Mr. Vincent is seeking to rezone 138 acres from RE1A to RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. He's proposing a 22-lot development. The lots range in size from 1.33 acres to 9.95 acres. There's an 80-acre portion of the property down here on the south end. It is not included as part of this development. And the heated and cooled minimum square footage that he's proposing is 2,500 square feet. These are views of that property. And then this is Tisdale Road. It's a private road that runs along the border of the property. And these are homes on Tisdale. And then these are homes on White Road. I'm not sure if he's here today or not.
Yeah, I mean, I might go set the public hearing.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Morrison to set the public hearing. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item number two, Ms. Renee.
All right. The next item is a dimensional variance request for Gary Robinson at 116 Water Tank Road. Mr. Robinson is seeking the dimensional variance, or it's needed because this is a .93 acre parcel. It's Zoned A1. The minimum lot size for A1 is one acre. He purchased in 2020 a portion of a 1.87 acre parcel. It was divided into two lots in June of 2020. And so the lot is non-conforming. This is an aerial view of the property, and this is his site plan. I looked at all the other lots on Water Tank Road, and none of the other lots are an acre either. And they've been that way for many years. He does have his 335 approving him for a sewer system on that property, or allowing, you know, he has an option to put in a sewer system. And this is a view of that property. And then these are surrounding properties.
Yeah, it's been like this for, shoot, forever. This old little spot. I make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Morrison to set the public hearing, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item two passes. The public hearing's set. Item number three, Ms. Renee.
Is a conditional use permit for Rachel Hodges at 2489 Star Road. Ms. Hodges is seeking the conditional use permit to reopen the Thomasville Mini Mart. It's a 1.03 acre parcel. The property is Zoned C2, general commercial. Convenience stores are allowed as a conditional use in the C2 zone. Her application states at the present time she won't have any gas pumps, but in the future, within the year, she would like to add diesel and gas. Also, the application states that no beer will be sold. She plans to serve breakfast and lunch, and she's proposing hours of operation at 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. They make- she's not planning to make any changes to the exterior of the building, and Brian has already been out and looked at the building and found it to be in good condition. I think she is here today if you have any questions for her. These are surrounding properties.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Calhoun to set the public hearing, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item three passes. Item number four, Ms. Renee.
All right. It's a conditional use permit for Corey Sanders on Highway 25. He's seeking the conditional use permit to construct a 4,800-square-foot metal building. He plans to sell sod, landscaping, and outdoor products. He'll carry natural stone, culverts, drainage materials, wildlife feed and seed, as well as other outdoor products. So the portion that's outlined is approximately five acres of a larger 17.80 acre parcel. That's an aerial view of the property. The portion that's in red is Zone C2, so the five acres that he plans to buy does have frontage along 25, and it's already Zoned C2. He wants to make sure he can be approved for the use before he purchases the property and before he obtains detailed drawings. This is just a conceptual site plan. The dark colors are- this is his main building here. He shows this as a secondary building, and then these are future proposed buildings. He'll have some outside bulk bins for storage of some of the rock and things like that. That's a floor plan, and then this is his, just a conceptual drawing of his elevation. He's proposing a white, arctic white color. These are views of that property on Highway 25. He's proposing hours of operation as Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 to 2:00 p.m. And these are surrounding prop- this is a surrounding property. That was about it. The only thing that was really out there in that area. This is at Stall Road, Highway 25 at Stall Road. So I'm not sure if he's here today either.
Yeah, he's here. Do we- we have a picture of the front of that building.
I thought that she-
She may not have the color picture. We saw-
We've got it in the file. Yeah, we do.
We have been pretty consistent with requiring something else on the front, like brick, rock, or something up midway. I mean, we just approved one down the road for the guy with the trailer stuff, and he's building a building. I like the look of this. It probably looks better than it would if we put something on the front. I don't want to start a trend that I- well, you let him do it, you know. What's the answer to that? What do you think, Corey?
I like the clean look of the metal front. I know it's going to be less maintenance with having to go all the way to the ground. I can landscape across the front of it and dress it up. With landscaping in front of it also, it's going to end up hiding-
What would be brick, whatever. Yeah.
Hey, Corey, come up to the microphone, just so we'll have it. And just introduce yourself to the board, the guys that don't know you.
I'm Corey Sanders. We own Southern Sod Supply right now in Pearl, and we're wanting to move up there to open up more of a hardware-type, kind of mini co-op-type business, selling gates and panels, fencing material, that kind of stuff.
Corey, if you would, just say again what you said back there. Just sit on the microphone there so they can hear you.
On the front of the building, I know having brick or stone or anything is going to be a maintenance issue at some point. And I can landscape across the front of the building to hide that area anyway. I've done landscaping for 17 years, and I know the maintenance that's going to come with having a brick front with metal meeting it. You're going to have issues with water getting in behind it at some point. That's one issue with having that flat front on that building, is that's going to be wood construction on that building. And I want it as low maintenance as possible, and I want to keep it crisp and clean looking. That's why I like the arctic white with the varnish slate roof on it, because that kind of never goes out of style, those colors.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If you would, I'm going to make a motion. We said it. Work close with Renee, okay, as we go through this process.
Okay. Well, just for the record, he will be coming back later for a full site plan architectural review with detailed drawings. This is just to see if the use can be approved.
Yes.
Mr. Gaines?
I said it. I mean, I made the motion.
So a motion is set by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item four passes. Number five, Ms. Renee.
Is a rezoning request for Kyle Cockrell at 1307 Old Fannin Road. He's seeking to rezone these two parcels on Old Fannin Road from P1 and C2 to C3. This is the Cockrell's farmer's market property. The farmer's market was established in 1999 before zoning was adopted. This is the zoning map, the pink, pink one, which is this one, is the P1, and then the red is the C2. So it has two different zoning classifications. This would make both properties C3, which would be a better fit for a farmer's market to be located in rather than the P1 or C2. And also, you can see the purple color to the north. I don't know what color it looks like to y'all. That's it right there.
Yeah, it looks red and white. That's it.
Yeah. Not purple.
Hey, I'm starting to think my eyes are gone. I mean, I know they're losing it.
We're starting to think there's something wrong, because none of our pictures look like they're supposed to anymore. But anyway, so the property where the car lot is located, it was rezoned to C3 in 2010, and it's just north of this location. These are views of that property and surrounding properties. That's the car lot.
So basically, you're just uniforming the whole area under the same thing. It's not going to affect Mr. Cockrell's area. Will affect it, but I mean, it'll change the zoning, but he's still able to do what he needs to do.
That's right. And it would be a better fit.
All right. Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item six.
All right. It's zoning text amendments, just an proposed amendment. We, at the last meeting, we did some changes or made amendments to the Reservoir Community District design regulations. However, I did not think about a double-faced sign. And so we wanted to clear that up and add language that would say that they are allowed and say that the total of both sides shall not exceed 500 square feet. And also, we have ordinance regulating outdoor billboard signs that was adopted by the supervisors in March of 15. I'm adding a statement Craig helped me with that said, "For purposes of the Reservoir Community District, the sign regulations supersede and replace that old ordinance, just in the Reservoir Community District." So that's the two changes there underlined on there.
So it's clear to you guys why we're proposing that, because we did not specifically address billboards in the RCD. We prohibited them. There was no need for us to step away from our old ordinance at O1. And now that we are addressing billboards directly in the RCD, we don't want confusion over which set of regulations of billboards should apply. So we're saying specifically, we're going to address the regulated billboards in the RCD through this place and ignore the old ordinance. But we don't need to get rid of our old ordinance because we- not everything is RCD.
Got you. So it's uniform. All right. Do you need any action on that? I'm sorry. Yes, you do. I'm sorry. Set a public hearing. So the board wished to entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the zoning text amendments. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. So the public hearing's set. Anything else under new considerations?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Renee. Item five, site plan architectural review. Do you have anything?
Not today.
Okay. Item six, Mr. Slade. Good morning again under nuisance property hearings.
Nuisance considerations, Mr. President. The first item's a little unusual in that the nuisance issue affects three separate parcels that are separately owned. And so we have asked for the owners of each of the three parcels to appear here today, to appear before the board and to give information and to hear information from the board. So I'm calling Sergio and Lori Lugo at 140 Gayden Road, Hugh and Catricia Peterson at 103 Gayden Road, and Leanne Reeves at 2742 Star Road. This is a nuisance consideration. Each of those parcels are located in District 3, District 1. That's correct. They are now in District 1 as a result of redistricting. It's right on the line, I believe. So-
Sure, the same problem.
So each of those names, each of those individuals that I call can begin stepping forward. Ms. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right. So we took these pictures on the 29th.
This is- I mean, some of y'all might not know, the beavers got this water backed up on Star Road. It's impacting the road itself. Of course, the dam's out of the county right of way.
Must be a big dam. Cover a big area.
If I can get Mr. and Ms. Lugo, please, to step forward. Mr. and Ms. Peterson to step forward, and Ms. Reeves.
Hey, good morning. If you would, just introduce yourself to the board. Kind of tell me who you are and your addresses, please.
Sergio Lugo. I'm at 140 Gayden Drive.
Okay.
And I'm his wife.
Okay. Just kind of go around the circle here. I'm sorry.
I'm Leanne Reeves Casey at 2742 Star Road.
Okay.
I'm Casey. Our view Peterson, 103 Gate.
Okay.
Mr. Peterson, 103 Gate.
Okay. Sir?
My name's Wiley Hardwick. I'm one of the regional owners of the actual property.
Okay, great. Mr. Morrison, Calhoun?
I mean, we got to get something done on getting this water off of Star Road. And I know we've tried to send the beaver guy out there to trap, and I think we've had issues with one of the neighbors not wanting any trapping done or going through the property. And, I mean, what's-
I've let them come to my property every time. I've removed the dam three times already at my expense. And I didn't put it up, but I've removed it three times. The beavers are putting it in.
You said you didn't. I know you didn't.
That's what I'm saying, the beavers. I can put it down the same night they're out there building it again.
Well, that's, I guess-
The side of the road you're looking at in this picture is about two foot higher than the side of- this is the up current side.
Yep.
The culvert that's under the road for about the last two years has been staying clogged up. You actually look on the other side of the road, and that's a different culvert. But if you look on the other side of the road, the water is actually now and not touching Star Road. It's down and draining out where it should be. Actually, like they videoed all of it during the last round. But the up, this is the up current side that you're looking at here, and the only thing stopping that water from going out is the culvert right there by that road.
That's right.
Wait, say it again. The only thing-
Stopping that water from leaving that pond, other than the man who owns that went in there about six years ago with a bulldozer, and he tried to clean it up when we had a drought, and it might have been 10 years ago. But he dug it down deeper, and he created that. It used to not be as bad as it was on that side of the road. And that man's name is-
McCrane.
McCrane. Ken McCrane. And he dug in there. But right now, most of that water will actually run out of there, but that culvert stopped up on the other side of the road. The water had drained right there, you can see, on the other side. And then on that side of the road, the water is up high and banked up from the up current side on Star Road.
What we gathered from our beaver guy, he can catch them there at the culvert. But the main issue is, he's telling us, is off the property, off the county right of way where the dam is, needs to be trapped. But, I mean-
I let them in every time he came down there, so.
To help us move along, what the county is wanting to do, we have a contract with a beaver control specialist, works for USDA. We have a contract with that individual, actually through Mississippi State. And he can go off of county right of way and get onto private property and deal with those issues. We have to have landowner authorization to do that. Mr. Lugo, do you or your wife, y'all have a problem? Would you be willing to execute a document that gives the county permission through- to execute a document that gives the county permission through the USDA specialist? Mr. and Ms. Peterson, would you give the county permission through, for the USDA specialist to go on to private property, your private property if necessary, and remove the beavers? Reeves, would you give permission to Rankin County to remove the beavers?
With conditions, if they're using traps.
No, this would not, this would be pursuant to the USDA agreement. He gets in there and removes the beaver. However, he's authorized to remove the beaver. Do you give permission?
I just don't want to be held liable for any damages caused should he trap something he didn't want to trap.
If, if the county through the USDA does it, there is not a liability exposure.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. I don't know that we have any more issues.
And whose expense?
This is at the county's expense. It's actually through USDA. This is a government contract.
I've done it three times, removed it complete.
Yeah.
My back pocket.
Okay. All right, I want to give two, highlight and add to this. My mother has had the same problem, only it's not on, it's all on private property. So, she hired a beaver guy. She had a CRP timber, and it was killing them. And they said they're gonna take you out of the program if you don't do something about the beaver. So, they can do it. Breaking it down won't do any good. It just, all it does is turn them on to build it back. So, you gotta get rid of the beaver. This man has trapped over a hundred and forty beaver off our place and adjoining neighbors, because that's the same thing he had to do. He had to get with the other neighbors, 'cause just getting them off ours wasn't helping. So, off of her place. So, he did that, and he continually checks them. But what, it's dried up now, where you can clip it, you can do everything. So, it's really a great asset if he'll keep them cleaned out. And, and then what he'll have to do probably is come back periodically and check, and he starts seeing it just like this guy does. He comes back randomly and, and finds where there's some activity and traps them. It's never been any, you don't even hardly know he's there. He's in there, out.
That's right.
So, I'm saying, he, it's not like he's disturbing things. He's not cutting stuff. He just, 'cause he's using the, the natural habitat that they live in, where they, to trap them. So, to answer your question, you know, only thing he has caught that, other than beaver, was an otter, several otters. So, I'm, I'm just saying, I've experienced it, and with, and over the years, that's what we've done, and it's, it's been the greatest thing she's done. We cleaned up the place, and cleaned, kept it clean. We were able to keep it clean, just like this. Once it got dry, we were able to keep it clean. So, anyway, I'll just let, leave you peace of mind.
Mr. President, if I may, just to walk us through, let, I would like to, to make a statement for purposes of the record of this hearing. So, Mr. and Ms. Lugo, Mr. and Ms. Peterson, and Ms. Reeves, who apparently is the, is the sole property owner of the property, that's how it's listed in the tax records, have given permission to Rankin County to, to conduct beaver control activity under our authorization with USDA or any under, any other authorization that we may have for beaver control purposes. Those individuals who are associated with our program are authorized by the property owners, given permission during this hearing for entry on to their property to conduct those beaver control activities. That's a, it's, it's a one-time permission issue for us. If we have other issues, we'll have to readdress with the property owners a continuing permission of some kind. I'd like to get a statement from each of them that if it turns out that we need to use several approaches to get the beavers, that we have continuing permission to address the current issue, and that this is all related to the protection of Star Road. Does everybody understand that?
Hey, man, it's, it's not gonna, but you can't get them one shot.
Yeah, it's got the...
It's continual thing.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
And, and what it's gonna do, it's gonna eventually start, just like my mother's place, start to killing more and more timber. And so, it's, it's really an asset for you all to, to get this out.
All right.
Because it, it, they, a beaver, as long as the water's rising, they're gonna keep adding to a dam and adding to it, and it just takes up more timber.
All right. So, if there's anyone who objects to the county's permission to go on to the private property and conduct these beaver control activities, you need to speak right now, 'cause we're sending them in to get, to take care of this issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slade.
There'll be no need for further action, Mr. President.
I'd at least ask the guy to, you know, let them know, just like the guy did us. He stops by and says, "Hey, I'm there." Now, he doesn't do that every time, but initially, we know who he is, and he recognizes, you know...
One, one other thing in this area, these culverts do need to be addressed. They, they are not being kept clean. That's part of what's backing up this water that's not flowing.
We'll, we'll make sure our road managers are aware of that.
Yeah, that is one part of the problem.
If y'all see it dammed up, let us know. Call it off, and we'll get, we'll get the beaver guy out there and the road crew out there to clean it out.
Yeah, work together. It's, it's gonna be good for everybody, and it'll help y'all's property.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Slade, we'll close that public hearing.
Yes, sir.
You've gotten all the action you need taken on that. Okay, so, we'll get to item number two.
No additional action on that item. Item two, and I think we can go ahead and take two and three together. Can we do that, Renee?
It's two different properties, same owner.
Yes, ma'am. Same owner, two different properties, if we can keep that straight. This will be the Gerald Mayo nuisance property, one ninety-one Barefoot Trail. This is District Four, and we'll also go ahead and open number three, the Gerald Mayo nuisance property at one seventy-one Barefoot Trail, District Four. Again, two separate properties, same owner.
All right, so, we received complaints on these two properties on August third of this year. We'd also had complaints in the past, mainly rubbish and debris, grass, inoperable vehicles. The certified mail was sent and received on both of these. And these pictures are the old pictures that were taken August ninth of twenty-one. These are the new pictures that were taken on the thirtieth yesterday. And this is the one ninety-one. Okay, so, these are the pictures for one seventy-one Barefoot. These pictures were taken on August the ninth of twenty-one. These are the new pictures that were taken on the thirtieth yesterday.
Good. Mr. Mayo here?
He is.
Okay.
You'll come forward, please. Give your name and address.
Gerald Mayo, one ninety-one Barefoot Trail.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayo, one ninety-one, one seventy-one Barefoot Trail, he'll hatch you. Is that right, sir?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or...
Yeah, I own a construction company, and I worked a lot of years for that, and the same paper is doing the complaining.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right, see the first picture? That's Elson.
Who?
Elson.
What's that?
She don't live no more. Piece of crap that turned this in, killed her. I got pictures of it in the backyard. All right, turn to the next one. That's Penelope. Shot through buckback legs. Same picture, same, of her being shot. This is Scout, shot through both front legs.
Did you contact the sheriff's department?
No.
But, good, good thing about all that is, we got them here today to help. So, take, take me, take me back to my property, Mr. Mayo, if you would.
What about it?
Tell us about this situation here. We'll, we'll talk about the animal cruelty, if you say. Yes, sir.
That trailer...
Yes, sir.
Is sitting in my yard, in my front yard. That is my Lincoln car. That's my construction truck in the back. That's my front end loader and tractor. I own GLM Services, but I had to move that. No, I hired it done, 'cause I had two heart attacks. I had COVID twice. And yes, that one seventy-one is now cleaned up. But that right there is in, it's gonna be used, but it's not right now.
Mr. Bishop, Gaines or...
Make motion clear nuisance to end up Justice Court.
Okay, so, we got, um...
Mr. Bishop, is that for both properties, just to be clear?
Both, both properties?
Yes.
I'll say.
So, we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayo. We'll, we'll handle this with the sheriff's office here in just one second. Let me entertain what we got here. So, mission, the, uh, public hearing's closed on that. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop to declare both properties, one seventy-one and one ninety-one, to Justice Court. Second, Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, it's a like sign. So, that matter's closed. All right, while I've got you here, Mr. Mayo, we've got this stuff here. I'm sure the sheriff or Chief McAlpin or one can address your issues on the animal is, stuff. Sheriff, I think...
No, it's all, it's all.
Sir?
It's all.
Would you like to talk to one of these deputies while we have them here in regards to it?
No.
Okay. I just want to be sure you got the opportunity to speak to our law enforcement guys.
His little idiot kid run down my driveway the other day fifty feet.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I should've shot him in the leg.
Well, we, we don't want you to shoot anyone. That's why, we, we got the sheriff's office here that if you'd like to file a complaint in regards to this animal issues, like, so we got the sheriff and Chief McAlpin and his guys that are here, we could take a report, take your information down, and be glad to talk to you about that.
Why don't you just leave me alone?
Well, sir, I guess that's kind of my thing. If we run into an issue of that, we've got the sheriff's office guys right here. We can, they can have a conversation.
No, I'm talking about leave me alone, my equipment and all my land.
Well, the main thing, the hearing side of everything was to try to keep our property values up and everything, and then we address issues that are going on on properties that may declare as a nuisance or...
Why are they selling there?
Well, I can't answer those questions. Those are all speculation things for me. But my point is, if you'd like to speak to one of our deputies or our sheriff's office, we have those guys here. We'll be glad to talk to you in regards to your complaints. Yes, sir?
No, if I decide to need him, I'll call him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Mayo.
Appreciate you.
All right, Mr. Slade, item number four.
Oh, can I get a copy of this? Can I get a copy of this?
Copy of what, sir?
It, it'll be on the computer. It's, it's in video form, so you'll be able to access it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo, for coming in. Mr. Slade, we'll go to item number four.
Yes, sir. Item four is a public hearing on the Roger and Samantha Moore nuisance property at nine twenty-three Shannon Lee Drive. It's a District Three property. I'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. or Ms. Moore to please step forward. Renee, if you'll demonstrate with the photos. Thank you.
All right, so, we received a complaint October eighth of twenty-one, grass, rubbish and debris, dilapidated mobile home, recreational vehicle, and inoperable appliances. These pictures were taken October the eleventh of twenty-one. And these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. This property is in the Robin Hood subdivision.
Is anyone here to speak on that?
I don't believe they are, Mr. Calhoun. But just for the record, we'll ask, is Roger or Samantha Moore, anyone representing them here today to speak on this matter, Mr. and Ms. Moore? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. It'd be appropriate to close the public hearing and take action.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Mr. Calhoun?
I'll make a motion to Justice Court.
All right, so, motion by Mr. Calhoun, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, it's a like sign. Item number five, Mr. Slade.
President, item five is the Catherine Stewart nuisance property consideration, three twenty-nine Kimberly Avenue. This is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Stewart or anyone representing Ms. Stewart to be prepared to come forward. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, we received a complaint January sixth of this year in regard to rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. We did send certified mail. It was received, and someone has contacted Kathy and been working on it. So, these pictures, again, were taken January sixth of this year. And then these were the new pictures that were taken yesterday. They have gotten rid of the vehicles.
So, they, some, some of the vehicles...
They're gone. The vehicles, the inoperable vehicles are gone. I think there's maybe a couple of boats.
The paddle boat that's in the picture?
If, if you would, just tell us who you are. I'm sorry.
I'm Catherine Stewart.
What's your address, Ms. Stewart?
Three twenty-nine Kimberly Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I have been gone for a period of time, and my brother is the one that put all that out there. I am here now, and I have went out there, and we have cleaned up most of it, and we are coming back. I do have my sister moving in with me, because I travel a lot due to my medical issues. So, she is moving in. We've got contractors coming out to remodel the trailer. All three of the vehicles that were there that were not running trash, they're gone. I made sure of that. That truck that's sitting in the driveway, that black truck, it's got an up-to-date tag. It is my son's truck. I have it there because of the issues in Robin Hood, to where it looks like somebody's there all the time. We are coming back and working on it. My sister's coming out this weekend to start the remodeling of the house, so we are tending to get everything done.
Okay. Mr. Calhoun?
We're gonna go ahead and declare the nuisance, but we're not gonna send it to Justice Court. We're gonna monitor it for thirty days, and if you will, let's get it cleaned on up. And, and remember, May the second, we're gonna have dumpsters out there. So, you'll have opportunity, but you need to...
You wanna go more, you wanna go to sixty days?
Let's go.
Well, I have a trailer that's coming.
Four, I'm gonna give you forty-five days. That way, the dumpsters will be in Robin Hood. We'll give you a place to put this.
Absolutely.
And, but now, after forty-five days, if this hadn't been seen to, we're gonna have to send it to Justice Court.
No, it'll be complete.
Okay.
Now, we may have construction there going on on the trailer, but yard-wise, we'll be...
We're gonna declare the nuisance, and our department's gonna monitor it for forty-five days.
You're not the only one that inherits a problem. Just like you said, it's mostly somebody else's stuff, but the problem is you own the property, so it comes to you.
Yes, sir, and that's not a problem. And we're making our way.
Appreciate you making a real effort that you are doing. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. All right, so, Mr. Slade, we'll close that public hearing. And Mr. Calhoun, forty-five days.
Forty-five days. Make a motion, declared a nuisance, and we're gonna give you forty-five days on it.
Thank you.
So, that's a motion by Mr. Calhoun, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, it's a like sign. Item six, Mr. Slade.
Item six is a hearing on the Ora F. Wright Estate here of Cypress Services LLC. This is a nuisance property consideration in District One at two sixty Morrison Road. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here on behalf of the Ora Wright Estate or Cypress Services LLC, please be prepared to come forward, give your name and address. Ms. Renee, if you'll demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so, we've received complaints on this property, several, several complaints. These pictures were taken September the eighth. It's a vacant pla, vacant home. I think there was issues with rubbish and debris, grass and weeds, and a dilapidated storage building. These properties were taken September the eighth of twenty-one. And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-ninth of this month.
All right, thank you, Mr. Renee. If you would, sir, just introduce yourself to the board, your name and address, please.
Yes. Thank you for hearing me today. My name's Connor Whitten. I represent Cypress Services, which has been employed by the mortgagee, the mortgage holder of this property.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you live in there?
I do not, no, sir.
So, if you would, just give us an update on the property, kind of where everything's at, and what's y'all's plans or progresses.
Yes, so, I guess as of the letter that was sent by you guys detailing the services that needed to be performed in that area, as of now, three of those five have been, North Star, the mortgage holder, has agreed to Cypress' bid for those specifically related to the weeds, the exterior debris removal, as well as the issues with the roof and the tarp. Those were scheduled to be completed yesterday, and yesterday around two or three, when I last spoke with Cypress, obviously, those were rescheduled due to inclement weather. They are scheduled, and as of this morning, to be conducted and completed today. With respect to the removal of the fallen tree and the dilapidated structure, they have, Cypress has submitted bids, and is waiting to hear back from the mortgage holder as to whether those will be approved. They're optimistic in the fact that they will be approved in the coming days, but as of around eight-thirty this morning, they had not gotten confirmation one way or another from North Star. But as of the end of today, everything except for the fallen tree and the issue with the structure itself should be completed. One thing that they did ask me to make you guys aware of is, in order to get to the issue of the dilapidated structure, they have to take care of the tree first due to the fact that it's partially on top of, of the structure itself. But I've spoken with Andrew Goldberger, who is the general counsel... But I've spoken with Andrew Goldberg, who is the general counsel for Cypress, and he asked me to please express, you guys... He understands that this needs to be taken care of, and this is definitely something that is on the top of their priority list.
To grade one, I mean, this has been ongoing. I've been, I've heard, this has been ongoing. So, they're waiting kind of till the end, I guess, to do it. So, there's not really a lot of tolerance in there, far as I'm concerned. The only question I had is, has the house been inspected? Is it even sound?
We have not inspected the house. We, you know, we're working it as a nuisance. We-
Yeah. I mean, if they're gonna be doing work on it.
The roof, he said he would-
But if it's been leaking inside?
Well, that's the point, yeah.
I mean, are y'all gonna try to sell the market the property, or sell it, or?
So, the Cypress was, is being employed by the bank itself. And the bank, based on our conversation yesterday, has not been able to be in contact with Ms. Aura or the, I guess, the actual borrower of the property. And so, as holding an interest in the property, they have stepped in to try to resolve this issue.
Been vacant for some time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's what the complaint is. Nobody keeps it up at all. And even if you go in and clean it up now, that's the complaint. The other people try to keep theirs up, and this one, you know, the grass grows up. So, nobody's cutting the grass, tending to it, obviously, on a regular basis. So, that's another issue. If you get it all cleaned up and all, we need something that keeps it up on a regular basis. Otherwise, we're gonna be right back where we are.
Right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, if I can help the board just briefly, the actual owner of the property is still vested in the Ms. Wright and/or her estate, the heirs-at-law, or anyone named in a will, assuming that that's gonna be probated eventually. And so, that is the target of the nuisance consideration, obviously. In this case, you've got a lien holder. You've got a mortgage company, North Star, that holds a beneficial interest in the property. In order for them to preserve that beneficial interest, they have got to, in essence, take care of that investment that they have, which is the loan. And so, that means that they may have to step in on behalf of the borrower and make improvements. And I think that's what this gentleman is explaining. They're intending to make improvements to preserve their investment. They've got an incentive to see to it that the value of their investment is preserved, but they are not the owner at this stage. Have they initiated foreclosure proceedings?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. So, at this stage, they hold a beneficial interest. They have a lien, but they are not yet an owner of record for purposes of our nuisance.
Flip the pictures again, let me-
Which direction? This way?
Sir?
Yeah, I'm just looking, yes.
Yeah, so we don't have the owner.
So, you're talking about going and taking this old structure down, the little one in the back?
I'm not exactly sure a hundred percent.
I mean, it's like trees kind of took care of most of it.
Yes, sir. And that is, that is one of the bids that is pending with the bank or the mortgageholder, is having the tree removed and then tackling the dilapidated structure and what all of that may entail.
I know a lot of local people would clean that up right, just right quick. I wouldn't be dragging it out like this, if I'm getting that. So, I guess you're waiting to hear from it, and that's, I guess, the other question, too. You're waiting, how long is the wait gonna be?
We're optimistic that this could, the remaining two bids could be approved here, I mean, any second or within the next several days.
Well, should we go and declare it a nuisance?
Well, let me make a suggestion here. Tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Connor Whitten.
Mr. Whitten. The, where we are positionally here is if we declare it a nuisance and we move it up to justice court, justice court still won't have the owner of the property in front of them, more than likely. And so, my suggestion would be this, that we ask Mr. Whitten to communicate back to his client. And by the way, he represents a third party-
Right.
-that is a service provider for a mortgageholder. So, the banks are not running around hiring people to get trees off of stuff. They have service companies servicing entities like Cypress who provide that service for them at a cost. And so, he's, that's his client. So, when we say that we hope that the mortgage company will approve a bid, it's his client's bid. So, he's talking to the person who's gonna see to it that that tree comes off. I think we've got as close of a contact point here to get something done as we're gonna have in this circumstance. So, my suggestion would be this. Allow him to communicate back to his client. That can then be communicated to the mortgageholder, North Star, that if action doesn't pursue, then the county has the option at that point to remove the dilapidated structure itself, remove the tree, cure the nuisance, and impress a lien against that property for all of the value of the cleanup. And that lien is ahead of North Star's lien. We get first place. So, if they decide they want to foreclose on it, they gotta come deal with us to satisfy our lien against that property. Otherwise, they take title subject to our lien. So, it's the best position we can be in. It also, I hate to say this on the record, but it helps Mr. Whitten's client out because they don't want their lien jumped. So, his client's probably gonna get a phone call that says, "Go do whatever you gotta do to not let that happen." So, that would be my suggestion. Let's tell Mr. Whitten, go back and talk to your client. Tell them that within a fifteen-day period, if we haven't had meaningful action to address the problems on the part of North Star, if we haven't seen that, and that'll need to be reported back to my community development people right over here, if we haven't seen that activity, the county is going to consider taking action itself and impressing a lien for all cleanup costs.
You understand my position. It's really hard to explain all that we just talked about to the people that live down there and let them really understand. They just think, somebody needs to clean up the deck and place, you know? And it's, so it's really hard to try to flip this. It sounds like you're just buying time, making excuses. That's the reason I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I like what he's saying, and we need to do something. It's been this way for a long time. They've been pretty patient. They really have.
You good with that plan?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Mr. Slay, so we close the public hearing, and you're just gonna let that directive be what it is?
Yes. So, what we're gonna do is, Ms. Renee's gonna expect to hear back from either Mr. Whitten or someone with North Star, the mortgage company, within fifteen days from today, explaining what the plan of action is or demonstrating what action's already been taken. That would be my advice. And then we'll follow up to see if it's happened. If it hasn't, then the next time we have this consideration, Renee, I'd ask that we table it until the next nuisance consideration where we can readdress it if needed. Then you guys would have the option at that point to go on and declare the nuisance, authorize cleanup activity, authorize the impression of the lien, and then we'll move forward.
All right, so, Mr. Slay, do you need us to take action on tabling it, or just-
Table it today for-
Are you gonna make that motion?
I'll make the motion to table it today.
I think it's 28.
27 to 28.
All right, so, we'll close that public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Mr. Morrison's motion is to table it for-
I guess, Phil, what's the next?
Mr. Slay, table it for how many days?
It's April 28.
Till April 28? So, that's Mr. Morrison's motion, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Thanks for coming in. Mr. Slay, we're on item number seven now.
Yes, sir. Item seven is a nuisance consideration, Cedric Jenkins at 136 Ed Span Road. This is a District 4 property. I'll ask Mr. Jenkins or someone representing Mr. Jenkins to step forward at this time. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so we received complaints on this property January 4th of '22. I sent a letter to Mr. Jenkins, just making him aware that zoning didn't allow this type business in a RE-1 zone. He did come by and speak to me at the office, and he indicated he would be applying to see if he could be approved for a conditional use permit. I continued to receive complaints after that, and these are all things that are posted on Facebook or advertising the business. And these are the property there. There's signage there. We also sent a notice to surrounding property owners.
That's correct.
And we received five of those back from property owners in the area who are opposed to the issues. There's a lot of noise and things like that. We've received multiple complaints.
Mr. President, if I may-
Yes, sir.
Let's allow Mr. Jenkins to address the board with his points. If there are individuals here who wish to speak on this matter, you'll be given an opportunity to do so. That'll be coming up in just a moment.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins, if you would, I'm assuming you're Mr. Jenkins. I speculated a little bit there, but you would introduce yourself to the board and give us your thoughts.
Cedric Jenkins, I live at 136 Ed Span Road. Been a lifelong resident of Rankin County, Brandon, more specifically. United States Army veteran, eighteen years of law enforcement. USCCA instructor and training counselor also, one of eight in the state. Do understand the letters that I received from the county, a hundred percent. I have recently, a couple of weeks ago, shut down the business aspect of it. I do shoot. That's what I do. I love to shoot. So, I do use my property to continue to shoot practice as of now. The business aspect that you see, again, I do understand it. My entire purpose, almost two years ago, of starting this was simple. It was just to educate and train the community, the more responsible gun owners. It started out with the rash of kids getting killed and killing themselves with firearms about two years ago, and it hasn't stopped, and that's my whole premise of it.
Yes, sir.
Again, I do understand a hundred percent the residential areas, not being able to conduct business in the residential area. And I a hundred percent is gonna abide by those rulings of that. I guess my only question would be, what would be the limitations of me as a landowner to shoot on my property when it comes down to being a nuisance? I've been there twelve years. When I first moved there, there was shooting going on. I didn't mind. Again, I'm law enforcement, military background. It's normal for me. I was born in the country, so I guess that would be my only question to you guys.
Okay.
This would be a great opportunity to explain to not only Mr. Jenkins, but to anyone in the room who's curious, what are the regulations as it relates to a private landowner discharging a weapon or firearm on their own property in Rankin County? Because this is a state law. The state legislature mandated that these men right here have no authority whatsoever to regulate the discharge of a weapon or a firearm other than in a platted subdivision. So, the question becomes, does Mr. Jenkins' property consist of a platted subdivision? The answer is probably no. Are the properties where Mr. Jenkins is discharging his firearm within a platted subdivision? Answer, no. This board has no authority to regulate the discharge of Mr. Jenkins' firearms on his property by Mr. Jenkins. None. He can shoot his weapons on his property to his heart's content. What he can't do is operate a business and invite other people onto his property to discharge their firearms in the conduct of a business. Okay?
Absolutely.
Does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
All right. Does that, does anyone have a question who is here to speak on the issue of not discharge of firearms, but on the operation of a business at this location? Does anybody have any questions about that? As Mr. Jenkins has said, he has stood down his business and will not carry on a business at this location. Where you guys can help us is to make sure that that, in fact, happens. And if you see information or evidence that we are running a business or selling firearms training or offering access to property in exchange for a fee to discharge a weapon, if that's happening, we need to know because that would violate, again, our ordinance. So, you have questions?
If you would, just come up to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. If you would, just have a seat, and we may have to call you back up to ask you something else, if you don't mind. Yes, ma'am, if you would, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address.
My name is Rosa Walker, and my husband is James Walker. And I lived here all my life. I grew up here. And-
What's your address, Ms. Walker?
859 Andrew Chaparral.
Andrew Chap, yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, so, go ahead.
Now, it ain't been this bad since winter been here. But in the summer, eight o'clock is seven days a week, and I know he ain't shooting eight hours a day. But any time of day, and now it's just sometime through the week. But now, on weekend, they blowing it up. And in the summertime, you can't hear your ears, and it just don't make sense. Those high-power rifles. I'm old, I'm sickly, my husband is bedridden, and he can't get no rest. And it just don't seem right that somebody can move. You know, we got property back there. We can't even go back there because you don't know who, them guns ain't got no name on them. And I'm scared to go back there. And you can see his house from where we live. So, it ain't never been nothing but a wife and separating us. And now, he say he ain't running no business over there, but he got to be running a business over there because ain't nobody shooting that much individually. Now, this is seven days a week, and I think we deserve better because, you know, I retired in this... You know, I retired from Rankin County Sheriff Department. My husband retired from Rankin County School District. And I feel like, you know, we should be able to be sick on our deathbed, you know, with a peace of mind. We shouldn't have to be listening to these high-power rifles, you know? Our last days should be our best days, and I just don't think it's right for somebody to move in right up on our nose, and we have to accept this as long as we live, even though we don't know. But I just don't think it's right.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Walker. Very much so. Thanks for coming in. Mr. Gaines, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, do you want to speak? Yes, sir, come on. Good morning. If you would, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Curtis Anderson, and I live at 135 Ed Span Road. Now, I moved here in 2007, and, you know, around neighborhood and everything. Now, Mr. Jenkins here, last year, I had a report. He jumped on me while I was cutting my lawn and pulled a weapon on me and told me he would blow my MF brains out, get my old A up, you know? Just get up. And when I turned around, he had his weapon drawn. When I took my camera out to take his picture, that's when he dropped and kicked his leg up. But the man is a nuisance. He come in making faces. After he got away with it, I called the police. The police didn't do nothing. I went to the hospital. I went to court. They didn't do nothing. He come back by after we went to court, making faces and making fun of me. I'm seventy-five years old. I have no chance of doing nothing to this man. If he's such a military guy, why is he beating up on me? I'm cutting my yard. He worked, he hit me. I got some scars that they throw out. I didn't get the big picture, but I got the bruises that he hit me with a limb and then pulled his weapon and threatened to blow my brains out. Now, just like I told the judge, somebody need to stop this guy. I'm not able to fight it. I need the courts to help me get rid of this problem, and it's just gonna continue. And he have no respect. I asked him to move the sign. He ain't moved the sign. He put something else. He came to my door and asked me about some sign. I didn't have anything to do with it, but yet, and still, he say I did it. Now, he's the kind of man, now, I would put no trust in him. And just like I say, scared of him. And if he, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen this summer when I get ready to cut lawn. You know, he might just be waiting like he was the last time. Take a broom and whatever he can get his hand on and hit me with it. take a broom and whatever he can get his hand on and hit me with it. I just want the courts to do something about this guy.
Well, thank you for coming in this morning. I appreciate your comments and all that. I would refer you from the same point, the operations of this board, just as Mr. Slay directed, we deal with properties, right, on that side. Anything on the criminal side, or the harassment side, or the assault side, I've got to refer you to the sheriff's office, right, to address those issues, and I'm sure they will, and we have a sheriff here, and he can have you speak to a deputy or something of that nature. Our issues pertain around the property issue and the use of the property, right? So that's kind of what the board's addressing here. But from your safety standpoint, I agree, everything is important to us, and the sheriff can direct you to the right spot and the right place and the person to talk to on that. So we appreciate your comments and thank you for coming in. Mr. Slay kind of stated our regulations on what we're allowed to deal with in regards to the property as a business, and that's the authority of the board. From a safety standpoint and your feelings and thoughts of that issue, I've got to direct you to the sheriff's office on that side.
Okay. How about the signs on my property? Can I have him move those?
Yeah, on your property?
On my property, yeah.
Yeah, anything on your property, you control how you want, it's your property, right?
Yeah, okay.
Right, so it's your property.
See, I don't want him coming on there no more. I've gave him an easement.
If you feel threatened or something of that nature, I encourage you to notify the sheriff's office.
I did. I notified the sheriff.
Where's your property, right there?
Right next door, I'm 135.
So he's got an easement going across your property?
That's my property, it's the left side, right there, where the sign, all of it is my property. And now, this easement, my property starts on the right side there, and it goes halfway down, well, goes all the way back, that's the twenty acres of lot we have. This part here is mine, that's an acre and a half right there. Now, from that drive way back this way, that's mine, you know, that's mine.
So that's signs on your property?
Yeah, that's mine. He want to put that sign somewhere, put it over there, I have no problem.
Well, the thing with the sign is a sign of a business, right? We've spoken to Mr. Jenkins in regards to the business signs, right?
No need for signs anymore, since there's not a business.
I'm going to let you speak, Mr. Jenkins, just one second. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right. So again, thank you for your comments, and again, any of the threatening or other issues you mentioned, if you would, direct them to the sheriff, and I'm sure the sheriff can address those things, but thank you for your comments this morning.
Yeah, I got the sheriff, but like I say, he got the sheriff somewhere in his pocket. I don't know.
Well, I don't believe anybody's got the sheriff in his pocket, so I thank you for that, so.
He got off the hook. I got that.
Well, that's a legal matter. That's not something we can address.
We can address that. So thank you for coming in, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, our main thing is, is just the business aspect of this. Mr. Slay stated what the law and statute says in regards to discharging your firearm. You're free to do that, and then, if you have anything else you want to add to that?
Just one thing that I'd like to add, so that there's really good clarity on the part of your constituents out here about what the county's authority is. Ms. Walker raised a point. Her point was, I live close by, a lot of firearm activity is happening right next to me, it's creating a lot of noise, it's creating a lot of angst, it makes us not be able to sleep well, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. In 2011, this board right here, not these guys, but this board supervisors adopted an ordinance in 2011, and that ordinance said, if you're within fifteen hundred feet of a platted subdivision, or you're within fifteen hundred feet of a residentially zoned property, which all of the properties being represented here today are, you cannot discharge a firearm in the direction of that property line. These guys saw, right then, we got a problem with a county that is becoming more and more urbanized, with people who used to live in the country but now find themselves surrounded by properties, by houses all around them, and so the board said, we got to get on top of this issue of high-powered rifles especially, because they don't respect property lines. Those projectiles will go wherever they're fired. So these guys said, you know what, we got to address that, and we adopted an ordinance to put a stop to that kind of discharge activity close to residential properties. If they run the ag, fire away. If they're in commercial, and it's not going to be a hazard to public safety, fire away. Industrial, fire away. But if you're close to a residential community, you cannot discharge that firearm within fifteen hundred feet of the property line. Right? That's what these guys did. And the state of Mississippi, the state of Mississippi through its legislature said, your ordinance is nullified. It's gone. You cannot enforce that. The state legislature. So, Ms. Walker, you're going to have to complain about noise next to you to your state legislator, because these gentlemen do not have legal authority to answer your questions or to address your issue. We've done as much as we can. We won't allow discharge of firearms in a platted subdivision. That's as much as the state legislature has given these guys. So if it's a platted subdivision, you cannot discharge a firearm inside there. But that's as much as they can do, and there is not a platted subdivision in y'all's community that is being impacted by this activity. So, again, Mr. Jenkins has the legal authority by virtue of the state of Mississippi to discharge his weapon to his heart's content whenever he's ready, wherever direction he wants to aim it. That is his right under Mississippi law, and the state legislature says, these men can't do anything about that.
Thank you, Mr. Slay.
He can't run a business, though.
So, other words, like it's been going, like it's been going on, it's going to continue that way?
Not running a business.
If we find out that what Mr. Jenkins is doing is operating a business under cover of darkness, we will put a stop to that.
What do you call, what do you call? It's a business. It's a business. It's a business in the past, people paying money.
Okay.
And you have to pay money to join.
All right, let me get, Mr. Gaines is going to speak, just a second. So, Mr. Gaines?
Mr. Jenkins, I think you said a couple of weeks ago, you stopped the business aspect. Okay.
You can come up, Mr. Jenkins, come up to the podium.
Address this, this is an advertisement on the internet that goes into April. So, yes, since the letters that I've received, I've received offers from First Baptist Church of Rankin County, that's in Rankin County, to allow me to use generous of them, some property that they own, to continue to do what I do. I've had investors, investors to call and wanting to pretty much put up the money for it. So, Boondocks, at this time, all of my business, as far as teaching and everything, I utilize Boondocks, that is Highway eighteen in Raymond, Mississippi, as of now. My plans, and my plans before the first letter was ever sent out this year, was to acquire property away from where I am currently living anyways in 2022. The letter just... I feel sure that you're going to be successful somewhere else. Yes, sir. And, really, the short of this, you can shoot your firearm out there, but nobody else can shoot their firearms out there. I misunderstood that, so, basically what you're saying, so... By the property owner, whoever the property owner is.
Well, you can't charge to bring people on your property.
Yeah, and that's my understanding. So, on Sundays, I may have a group of buddies to come out. You're saying that I can't invite a person on my property to fire their...
Mr. Slay, I think you can do that, I think you just can't charge, like you can't make money off of it as a business standpoint.
Absolutely, and I totally understand that. Okay. I totally understand that. That aspect of it. Did you really attack this older gentleman? I'll say this, Mr. Gaines, that incident has been reported to the sheriff's department and for record, I've never met our sheriff, great sheriff, but I've never met him, so he's not in my pocket, I have small pockets anyway. But no, I'm not going to even answer that. It's already been to court, and a judge already ruled on that. But if it happened, I'm ashamed of you. And I retired from federal law enforcement. Absolutely. Everybody in my family. Absolutely. We don't act that way. Absolutely. And I hope you didn't. Well, I hope I didn't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Mr. Slay, you want to say anything else, we'll close the public hearing?
I think we've heard enough, Mr. Slay, and we can go ahead and close that.
Okay, so the public hearing's closed, no action taken, right, Mr. Slay?
That's correct.
Okay. So, item number eight, Mr. Slay.
Item eight is a continuation of our old Pearson Road Mobile Home Park nuisance consideration. This is a district one parcel. We'll reopen that public hearing and continue that public hearing, it's already been opened previously. I'll ask anyone representing the old Pearson Road Mobile Home Park to step forward, and Ms. Renee will demonstrate with photos.
Sure.
Okay, so these pictures were taken on February first, showing the condition of the park itself. Representatives were here, and they had been given a date to get things cleaned up and finished up. So these were those old pictures. And so, these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. Kathy did hear from Mr. Guthrie, and he said that two of the homes would be moved out yesterday, and then he had to get like an axle to be able to move the others. One of the homes did leave yesterday, I believe, and he was also going to tear one down. But I think one home left yesterday, but that was it. Kathy did say that most of the rubbish and debris has been removed and cleaned up, so some progress, I think, has been made, but they are not where we had wanted them to be.
I guess my question would be why?
Well, we've been trying really hard.
Hey, if you would, just introduce yourself to the board, I'm sorry. Name and address.
129 Star Brexton Road.
Yes, sir.
We've been working on tearing the mobile homes down, it has taken some time, I apologize. It has been a lot of work, it was a mess, so it has been a lot more work than, you know, we originally thought.
So you're tearing them down, not pulling them out?
Somewhere pulling out, somewhere tearing down.
Well, I got a question about pulling out, where are you going with them?
They're going out of Rankin County. They will not be in Rankin County. They're going down to Simpson County. We have a big property down there, and they're going to go down there and then be torn down. There was no way we could get them torn down and taken care of in this timeframe here. So, part of the thing was the mover. Evidently, they are two and three months booked in advance, and it's taken him some time, but he assures us that now that he's starting to work with us, he will get the other ones on out there as quickly as possible. At this point, all I can really do is respectfully ask maybe another thirty-day extension, and I believe we can complete it and get it up to the standards you guys would like and the respect that Rankin County deserves.
Ms. Morrison?
You know, I hate to keep carrying on carrying on, but this, you know, I guess my rub is, because this has been going on for several years.
Yes, sir.
And it wasn't until right now, we just said enough's enough, and now we're going to jump on it. If you'd have been trying to clean, somebody's cleaned up a lawn, you probably wouldn't, we wouldn't have this, be here today. I know it's going to take you some time to get it, but what's my...
You've got the option to clear it in nuisance here, and it's just ended up being a justice court matter. It looks like that they're taking steps to do something. They're not going to be able to do anything with it. The other option that you've got is for the self-help cleanup, I think the expense on the part of the county to try to clean it up itself would be significant, and the likelihood of recovering our cleanup costs, probably not there. Another option that you have as it relates to public health, safety, is seek some sort of chancery intervention here, chancery court intervention, that would be in the nature of like an emergency proceeding, where the chancery court could, would have available to it a multiplicity of options about how to address this, among them, setting a hearing and then entering an order that requires immediate action on the part of the property owner, that can then be the subject of a contempt citation. That's a lot more power than a justice court would have.
I don't want to do justice.
Yep, so, the board can, the board can take any of the, we don't typically consider something like a chancery court proceeding, but in situations, but I don't know that we've ever had one where you've got public health, safety, welfare issues like we have here.
He's not the property owner, though. He only owns some of the homes that we wanted out.
He only owns some of them, he's not the property owner.
So, the proceeding would be against the property owner and the owners of the units that have public health, safety issues that need to be addressed. So there would be a number of defendants that are in that process. This hearing right here is not impacted or will not impact your authority to make a separate determination to authorize the filing of a chancery proceeding. We don't need defendants here. They will get served with a summons and a petition as a part of the chancery court proceeding, right? So Mr. Guthrie is here in his capacity as an owner of some of the properties that are being impacted here, and he's addressing those considerations to you in the subject of this nuisance. Y'all can make a separate finding that there are public health, safety issues that need to be addressed in a chancery court. Y'all can make that, and unfortunately for Mr. Guthrie, some of his properties are going to be caught up in that. Okay? So those, that's really your three options there. Justice court, do it yourself, or authorize the filing of a chancery proceeding, which we will do in...
Or give him another thirty days.
Or give him another thirty days, yes, you can give him another thirty days, allow it to...
How many have you gotten gone? How many are gone now? Two?
We have two gone now. He assures us all of them can be gone in this next thirty days, and we can complete the cleanup.
All right. I think I'm going to do the thirty days, but we're going to stand ready to pull the trigger.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, that's where we are.
Yes, sir. And I apologize for even having to come before the board.
All right, so we'll close that public hearing. Go ahead, Ms. Walker, what you want to add?
I'm going to give you another thirty days, and we're going to watch, make sure you're doing, but I'm going to tell you, don't come in here after thirty days, go, well, I got one more gone, I'm going to have to get, it'll take me a little while to get some more, that's over.
Yes, sir.
So the continuance would be to April 28th, and I'm letting Mr. Guthrie hear that date, so that he's on notice now that we'll reconvene on April 28th for further consideration of this matter, and we'll address the condition at that point.
So you make a motion for that?
Motion to table to April 28th.
I make that motion, and I appreciate you doing what you're doing, I just, like I say, you got to understand on my side the pressure that's been on me for three years, really, this has been going on for years.
As you say, it's been a years-long thing, and to do it in the timeframe we're working with, you know, I feel like we're doing a good job, naturally could be more, and Mr. Calhoun had pointed out thousands of dollars that it has cost because it's done, so it's been some of the funding issue to work the money through to get it done also, so.
All right, so we've got a motion for continuous, Mr. Morrison?
Twenty-eight days, until April 28th.
All right, so motion, Mr. Morrison, second. Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All affairs aside, any opposed with a like sign, so the motion's continued. Item number nine, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir. I think we finally got here. This is a review of the Thomas Clark nuisance property at 302 Keith Avenue, it's a district three property. We'll open that public hearing for review purposes, and Renee will demonstrate with photos. Thank you.
So these were our pictures that were taken October 11th of 21, showing the condition of the property at that time. And these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. Mr. Clark is here.
Come on up, Mr. Clark.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Clark. If you would, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address, please.
Thomas Clark, 302 Keith Avenue.
Mr. Clark, it looked like you've done a good bit of improvement around the place.
I've been trying.
Appreciate that.
It makes a big difference out there, I mean, because there's a lot of people travel that road, Happy Wood, and we did declare that a nuisance. What did we do? I think we sent the justice court, I'm thinking now.
Mr. Slay, you know what action needs to be taken on this item, on number nine? I think Mr. Calhoun's pleased with the work, this table.
Okay.
Thirty-day table, so.
Can we keep it like that?
Yes, sir.
Now, you know there's going to be people going to call, and we don't have to go through this again. This will be number two.
Now, I will say, I'm still cleaning, so y'all see trailers coming in and out.
That's fine. The youngsters will be and Robin who had made a second, so I may take advantage of it. I think it's a second.
So, what actions does Mr. Calhoun need to take?
So are we satisfied at this point? Brad, are we satisfied with the cleanup activity to this point?
I'm satisfied at this point.
Okay. I think we just need to be prepared, let me say this, for Mr. Clark purposes.
This trailer's been removed, hey?
Gone.
Okay.
So, by taking... So by, by taking no action today, we are saying that the matter's concluded, okay? If, if the property goes back into a state that we believe is a nuisance, it'll come back before the board again, but, but it'll be at a start-over type of procedure, Renee will have to actually send out the notice, we'll have to go through the process again.
Do not.
Right.
Mr. Williams spoke highly of you and, and I mean, I want you to keep it clean.
In fact, as fast as you did that, I reckon you could help Mr. Guthrie.
Look, I had to go all the way to Sugar Lock to pick up our excavator to do that with.
I appreciate your work in getting the community clean, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I look.
No action taken. Alright, so we'll close that public hearing, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Clark.
For your help, and then, no action was taken on that matter. I'm scared to ask, was anything else under item number six, Ms. Renee?
We're done.
So the board entertain a motion under item seven, to adjourn. So motion of Mr. Bishop to adjourn to 28 April 2022. Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, any opposed with a like sign, planning commissions adjourned. So entertain a motion to reconvene the board supervisors meeting. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, any opposed with a like sign. So we'll start, Mr. Slay, since you sat down and got a fresh cup of coffee back with public hearings, under item eight. Thank you, Ms. President, this is a, where am I? You're under item A, public hearings, continuation of a. Thank you, Ms. President, you're exactly, I need help. This is the conditional use application and permit consideration, 1123 O'Fannan Road, Suite B, District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing, let me get my cheat sheets.
Well, you know, I reviewed that, but I've got something, but if I got notes on there, just wait a minute.
So that public hearing is open, Mr. President, BG Capital LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a laundromat in Suite B of the Exxon Convenience Store at 1123 O'Fannan Road. It's Suite B again, it's a .96 acre parcel, property is Zone C2. No exterior modifications to the building other than signage. Proposed hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. That public hearing is open, I'll ask as fair as anyone here to speak in opposition to the BG Capital LLC conditional use permit request, anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? As President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on the matter unless the board has questions or comments to be directed to the applicant. We can close the public hearing and take action, depending on what you guys need. Great, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use under item A.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion?
Conditions as far as the loitering and what have you.
Yes, sir, so one thought process that occurs to me, Jay, is, and this is totally discretionary with the board, there would be some concern, given the nature of the business, and I don't apologize for saying that, but given the nature of the business, there is the potential for loitering, there is the potential for aesthetic challenges, there's potential for trash. I think one condition should be that there should be zero, no outside seating available for this facility. That will disincentivize hanging around or loitering or trashing up the place, that would be one thing. I would also request that we put as a condition that the applicant for this conditional use must use good business practices, keep the facility clean, neat, orderly, free of trash, and that that be a condition to this permit, subject to review by your staff. If the board wishes to, the board can implement some sort of incentive on the part of the applicant to carry through by requiring some form of bond or collateral for compliance with the conditions. That would be forfeited in the event that there's a violation of those conditions. Of course, there would be notice, there would be a hearing, there would be an opportunity to challenge the board's finding there, but that collateral would be at risk, that's totally discretionary for the board and you'd have to come up with what amount you would want to use. Those are a couple of thoughts that we've kind of kicked around as a staff to try to help us with some of those issues. You wanna add those?
I don't know, I definitely don't like the idea of loitering, so whatever we do to, you know, keep that down.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Jay on that, so, I'm willing to modify that motion to add whatever type of conditions we think would be warranted in that area to give us a little bit more teeth in enforcing them.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Yeah, just the fact that policing it and make sure that they adhere to keeping the business tidy, clean, and if it does fall, just repair it.
What type of bond are you talking about?
It would be minimal, Steve, I would suggest something in the nature of about $1,500 to $2,500. It'd be a cash bond, payable to the county, we would place that in an account that's segregated so that it could be tracked, and it would simply be held for the purpose of compliance with your conditions. Okay, Jay, what do you think?
I'm not opposed to it, so.
Do you need to reach out to them and have the discussion with? Is there a representative here of business? Yeah, just come up to the microphone, if you don't mind, sir, thank you, and just do the same thing.
I'm Jeff Barber, I live in Ridge and I practice law over there.
Yes, sir.
My folks is here, he operates this business, he's got six laundromats, he's got one in Madison, so we're, you know, we're.
We're gonna be easier, we're easier than Madison.
Empty thing from the Madison City Hall, so if you ride by there, you're gonna say, that's the nicest place, my mother could go there, clean. You know, we're not trying, we have no objection to anything you suggested, but it's, you know, we're in the business of being, you know, the top, the cleanest, gonna spend a ton of money over there, gives, give people an option of somewhere super nice to go, so we don't have any problems with anything, Mr. Slay.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Slay, do you wanna kind of, sorry, while you're here, Mr. Slay, if you can, don't mind, just maybe put some conditions on this thing and go ahead and advise them of that and be sure they're good? Well, I think I stated that the key issue for us is we cannot allow loitering and so we don't want outside seating that could promote that. I think Mr. Barber probably understands why we would say that, so that should be a condition, that the applicant, the person seeking the conditional use here, will agree that a condition to, of the permit is that there is no loitering. If we find in our review that there is a consistent pattern of customers hanging around on the outside of this business, we're going to bring it forward for consideration of withdrawing the permit, okay? So that's a condition. I would like a commitment on the part, and I think you've heard it, that they will keep the facility clean, orderly, neat, free of trash, free of debris, that they'll do everything that they can to keep it as good-looking as Mayor Mary requires hers to be, we would, we wouldn't want any more than that. Okay, so Mayor McGee, and if they're happy with how things are going, we'll be happy if ours looks like that, okay? That would be a condition. I'm ambivalent about the bond, honestly, it's probably more trouble than it's worth for our people to try to keep up with a cash bond. I would just suggest, you've heard from the applicant, they showed up, they told you they're committed to make this thing top-notch. I say, let's give them a chance to do that, and then if we have to come back later and readdress the issue of the permit, we will establish the bond at that time and probably be a lot higher than I suggested. Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I'll put that in for a motion.
Alright, hang on a second.
Is this permit perpetual? If they were to sell out, could we require the next person to come before us before they could operate?
Absent a condition being that it's not transferable to a subsequent transferee, Steve?
That's.
Without board authority, I would make that as a condition as well, that if it's going to be transferred, if I can clarify this for Mr. Barber, if they're going to change the entity structure, but the actual underlying ownership is gonna remain the same, that is not a transfer for purposes of what we're talking about here. If they're gonna sell and transfer the license and the permit to a third party, the board needs to be able at that time to authorize the transfer of the conditional use permit. That would be a condition, Jay, can you amend your motion? Well, I guess I had the motion and Gaines had it, but I'll just amend it to those two things right there. Yeah. Well, those three things with the seating, Mr. Barber, outside loitering, I guess outside loitering would be the better answer for that, the cleanliness of it and then the non-transfering without coming back to the board to discuss. We would have no objection to any of that. Thank you, Mr. Barber, so I'm gonna amend my motion to that.
Me too, I amend mine.
So I'll make the motion that Gaines is second, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye, any opposed with a like sign, thank you, Mr. Barber, appreciate your willingness to work with the board. Mr. Slay, under item B, Mr. Vincent's conditional use permit? Yes, sir, this will be a continuation of the David Vincent conditional use permit, Gablewood Trail, District 2. David Vincent is seeking a conditional use permit to place a new double-wide manufactured home on Gablewood Trail. He owns a 3.75 acre parcel, the property is Zoned RE1. He is seeking the conditional use permit under the hardship, hardship section of the RE1 zone. Home be occupied by a friend who is disabled and in need of assistance. If the application is approved, an acre will be deeded out for this parcel. We'll open that public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the David Vincent conditional use permit, Gablewood Trail? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? As President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter, is Mr. Vincent President?
He's not.
He's not here, okay. Unless the board has additional questions or concerns.
Is he a sewer then?
No.
It must be more than an acre then.
I don't believe it does.
Well, I mean, with Health Department approval, he will be able to get sewer, he should on an acre. He's got more than that if he had to have it, you know.
Well, I just, one acre doesn't work for non-s sewer, you just don't.
That's the minimum lot size in that zone, oh, did I understand?
The minimum.
I understand.
Right, the minimum can be increased, or the slot size, I think it should be at least acre and a half.
Okay, Jay, so a condition to this permit would be that he expand the acreage to be deeded to 1.5 acres and not one, alright? I would also ask the board to consider, because this is a hardship request, this one deviates from our typical policy, I want to make that clear, that this is not black and white regulation, but it's a policy that this board has generally followed in hardship considerations. We generally allow a hardship situation where it is a family member who is in need of additional care, right? That's typically what we handle and there's good reasons for that. This is not a family situation, this is a friend who is, who is subject to the request. I would ask the board to consider making as a condition to the permit that the minute that the hardship is no longer, it no longer exists, that the permit disappears and the unit needs to be relocated.
Well, then there wouldn't be a need to section off the land.
There will be a need to section the land, because you can only have one dwelling on RE1.
Right.
Alright, I'll make that motion as Mr. Slay stated. With, with the conditions, Daniel, okay, we'll make, we'll make that condition and report that to Mr. Vincent, that it's 1.5 and the minute that there is no longer a hardship, no longer a need for the occupant of this second unit to, to live at that location, the, the unit has to, has to be gone. Do we want to put a timeframe on that, it's gotta be gone within 90 days from the date that we're. I mean, that's fine, we do.
I don't know how we're gonna monitor.
Well, more than likely, it's gonna have to be a neighbor helping us. Yeah, and if they try to change ownerships of it, they still gotta come back to change the names of the power or something like that. It's still going through Ms. Renee's office. We'll be able to monitor it in-house. Alright, so that'll be my motion, everything Mr. Slay stated, Mr. Bishop? Second by Mr. Bishop, any further comments? All in favor, say aye, any opposed with a like sign, so item B passed. Mr. Slay, you're trying to get out of this thing by sitting down early, but we're gonna do one more. I feel like I've been up here for six hours, I know y'all do. So public hearing to be determined about an abandoned segment of Melody Lane? Yes, thank you, Ms. President, so we have a public hearing scheduled for today. Notice was provided as per the statute 657121. We notified all property owners who access Melody, Melody Lane, the, keep in mind that Melody Lane is in part a private road and in part a public road. And so what the board is considering today is the abandonment of a segment of Melody Lane where it turns to the east and goes across Mr. Blake Rogers' property. And I think Mr. Rogers is here, Mr. Rogers, if you wanna step forward, you may not have participated in this, but come on forward because it affects your property. Mr. Rogers was here when we were considering this situation as a nuisance consideration, you may recall. We had some vegetated debris staged in the public right-of-way of Melody Lane that is the access way for Mr. Rogers to reach his property. And so the board considered going ahead and establishing this proceeding now, this public hearing, to consider whether or not it'd be appropriate just to abandon the public segment of Melody Lane where Mr. Rogers' vegetated debris is located, allow it to go back private, and then that way, Mr. Rogers doesn't have to move any of that vegetated debris because it's no longer in the public right-of-way, that's what we're doing here. So I will ask, is there anyone here today to speak on the matter of the abandonment of a segment of Melody Lane? Anyone here to speak on that matter? If you'll step forward, please, give your name and address.
You sit back down now.
Hey, good morning, just come up to the podium if you would, just introduce yourself, your name and address, please, sir.
Johnny Rogers, 160 Stowe Road.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rogers, good morning.
Johnny Rogers, 160 Stowe Road.
Okay.
Arthur Smith, 441 Melody Lane.
Okay, good morning, thank you for coming in, y'all's comments or thoughts?
Well, a question, so you say the abandonment as far as for the actual road where the, excuse me, where the debris was? If we abandon it, because part of that road is actually, it's not, it's private, right? So if we abandon it, then what happens to it if we make it public, because it's a private road?
Yeah, Mr. Slay, I'm gonna let you kind of address the details of the road. So we got it backwards, okay? The road is currently, as it, as it goes to the east, Melody Lane comes along running north and south, so it's running north and then it turns and goes to the east and Mr. Rogers' property is on the southeast corner of the termination point of the public road. We're abandoning the segment that goes to the east, not the part that runs north and south, the part that goes to the east and connects to Mr. Rogers' property, that's what's being abandoned, it's currently public. It's being abandoned, which means it becomes private and it, the title to that access goes back to the private property owners who are adjacent, that's how it all works. Does that clear things up for you guys?
Y'all understand which way it's going.
It's the, it's the strip where he lives on to the right.
This is north and south, right?
I don't know what you. I think so.
It's north and south right here, yeah.
I'm north this way.
You're right.
West this way, this is east.
Okay.
I'm on the north side, so the road is on the north side.
Alright, so where it takes into your property, that remains the same, we're talking about the east side.
That remains the same.
The, the north side does.
Right.
The north side's public right now, what we're trying to do is, it's a public road. Until it makes that 90-degree turn and heads to the east. That road is public all the way to that point, all the way to your property line, road right-of-way is public road. If it's got asphalt on it or chip seal, it's public. It's, that's already in place now, what he's wanting to do is where it takes to the east and turns right, is take that off the county and put it on private, and the original owners, where the easements come up, will then assume the property responsibility. So where it turns to the east, they'll have to maintain that road, he'll have to maintain that road, that's his private road at that point.
So the easement still will stay there with it being a private road?
Yeah, this does not affect an easement, all we're doing is taking the stamp of a public road off of this and the county will not go out there and maintain it. Not the main drive to the right, where he lives.
I maintain it, what's running north, I maintain that myself, that's the private.
Is this your driveway or a road?
It's a totally private road, it's not Melody Lane.
Nothing, 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 nothing that's private right now is getting changed. Only thing that's getting changed is a section that's public, we're making it private for the owners whose property easements work into that road now becomes theirs. So nothing is going from private to public, it's going from public to private, that one strip.
So I had a question, so by that going public to private?
Okay.
If he actually wanted to put up a gate or fence there to enjoy the easement? So he's allowed to do that, would the easement still be in effect?
He's allowed to gate his property.
Yeah, he's, I think he's saying if he's got, if he's got easement going across it, if he puts the gate up, he won't be able to cross it.
Slay, why'd you address that? So this board does not address private easements, which is what we're talking about.
Right.
There's a different court for that. It's called a chance record. If somebody has an easement across property, and they can demonstrate that, because it's in writing, it's in the land records, it's all signed, it's all official, you've got a D-book and a page number, you've got all that situated, and somebody blocks that access with a gate, you take that to a chance record, and a chance record will fix that.
In other words, if I have an easement right here, for that point y'all talking about, go down that park there, I had to have the easement to run my water line down there. I couldn't have gotten my house built. But I have the easement, one way to the other way, to that point y'all talking about, wanting to be private.
So, this board does not address the scope of those, or the legality of those, or whether they are enforceable? This board doesn't address that. That's what a chance record is for, if there's an issue.
Okay, so, when you speak in terms of an issue, so if I have a water line problem and can't get through there, that's an issue, right?
It is, and we don't, the county's not in the water business.
Well, if you got a water line, who put the water, is water coming?
It's on the water association. We're not in the water business.
The water association...
He had to put it down.
My water line was running from his property all the way up, and I had to get an easement for the other park where Blake was. So, I have the easement, I had the easement before he got in there, wasn't nothing there. So, I still have the easement.
Yes, sir.
I'm just wanting to know if it's going to be a problem if I have a water line leak that's happened going in there to make a repair.
That is an issue to be addressed with the water association, the property owners, the holders of the easement. This board, Board of Supervisors, which is who you're standing in front of asking, is not dealing with those issues. We don't deal with that. We wouldn't be dealing with that if we were talking about whether this is a public or private road. That's a private easement.
But your comments here is basically saying you're not in support of us turning that road to private, that's public right now?
Unless you've got access.
Well, I'm going to have to have access. If I lose water, how am I going to repair it?
Sure. So, I guess my point is, you're against the board, turning that road private. You'd rather leave it public. Is that your thoughts? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because of the easement.
Because of the easement side, right?
Right.
The only way that your issue becomes an issue is if we turn that road private. Now, you have to deal with the water line issue. So, if it remains public, there is no issue from y'all's standpoint. Is that correct?
Let me see if I understand this, because where his water line is, is not on the road or in the road right-of-way.
Well, we don't know that, Steve.
We don't know.
Yeah.
But what I'm thinking is that if he had to get an easement, what we're doing is, will have no effect, because he could come out there and do something to stop him, or try to stop him from working on his water line right now. And that easement that he has in his hand would be...
That's the controlling document.
That would, whether it's private or public.
That's correct.
Okay.
You would just have to present that to the authorities to show that this is an enforceable issue. So, your stuff's right, it's what Mr. Slay's explaining to you. You would just have to take it to the courts to show them that this is right and you have access to it.
If it got...
And you could be in that same situation right now, because we don't know where the water line actually sits. It's not on the roadside. Chance record is, what's my directional heading? This direction?
North.
North from here?
Northwest.
North.
I can't even tell which way I'm pointing right now. It's in the same county, not in this building, but it's over in the brand-new building that's set up.
Okay.
He's pointing a different direction with coffee, but which way?
No.
Yeah. That way. Chance record?
It's southwest.
That way. It's within a thousand yards of this building. That's what I can tell you.
It's the newest courthouse in the county.
The brand-new building.
North Street.
So, does that help y'all? Tell me what you guys want. Would y'all want the road public or private?
Private.
Oh, man.
I don't think where you're living is on that strip, though. You're not on the turnoff, right? You're already public.
It's a private.
So, you're already public. Let's just put asphalt and chip seal and all down on your road, right? Or do you do that?
And so it's clear.
We do it?
No asphalt on.
It could be gravel.
Then I'm sure whatever you're maintaining is your private property. I just don't know where you're sitting.
I have another question. Now, if I have a water line running across my property without my permission, what I do about that?
That's a private matter also. We don't have any water lines. The county doesn't. So, that'd be a water association question.
Okay, I have another question for this gentleman.
He only gets 10 questions today. We're on like 12, but go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, did I, did I not hear you say find a firearm? It would have to be 1,500 feet from the property line?
Planted subdivisions. Planted subdivisions.
This board passed an ordinance that said that, and the state legislature said, "You cannot do that," to these guys.
So, they killed it.
Told them, "Throw away your 1,500-foot ordinance, throw it in the trash, it no longer applies." The only regulation you can have is planted subdivisions. You can regulate, and they have, by ordinance, if it's a platted subdivision, you cannot discharge a firearm inside there.
But you don't have a platted subdivision.
Well, so what's the final decision, to make it private or public?
We're fixing to get there. We're just kidding.
I'm afraid I want y'all to want.
Tell me what you guys want.
For it to stay the way it is?
Public. Okay. All right, thank you, guys, for your comments. I appreciate you.
Well, they got to clean the logs up.
That's right, yeah.
We'll hear from Mr. Rogers.
About the water line.
Hey, that's going to be the Water Line Association, not the Water Line Association, your Water Association. I almost said the Water Line Association.
A meter is put outside my property, and a line is running on my property without my permission.
He talked to the water company.
And I guess that's what I'm saying, the county...
It was the Water Association, yes, sir.
That's fanning, I believe.
Is it fanning?
I believe so.
Be the Water Line Company.
I talked to the Water Company, this was in, well, last year.
Yes, sir.
The line was coming across. This is what he told me. He said, "I can do anything over here on my property, if I want to cut that line..."
Hang on a second. Hang on, I want to get to you. Hang on.
I would have talked to the person.
Hey, hang on a second.
He cut the meter off.
Look, and I'd love to address it, the county doesn't have water lines, so...
We're going to have to call the water association.
I don't want to push you off anywhere else. I'm just, that's it. All right, thank you, guys, for your comments. Mr. Slay?
Before I let Mr. Rogers speak, I want him to have an opportunity to address the board about the request. And this is the board's own consideration. Mr. Rogers did not apply for this. We talked about it in the context of how to address the nuisance consideration by just simply allowing the board to consider abandoning that small segment, that short segment, where there is blacktop, where there is chip sealed material there. It's probably a couple hundred feet, is what we're talking about, if it's that long. And so here's what the board has to consider. These are the elements of your consideration to determine whether or not you ought to abandon a public road segment. The section does not provide primary access to occupied properties. That's one consideration. So, the gentleman who spoke, standing here and was asking the water line questions, that gentleman has access to his property from a means of access other than this segment. Mr. Rogers has access to his property from this segment, but I believe he's going to tell you that he wants it to be abandoned. Right? So, he actually wants you, even though his property is occupied by this means of access, he's telling you he wants it to be abandoned, so you would be authorized to do so. Traffic on the section has, for a period of at least 10 consecutive years, been intermittent and of such low volume that no substantial public purpose is being served. I think that is in play here. That's the case. The board has, for a period of at least previous five consecutive years, not maintained the section significantly as part of the public road system. Whatever we've done, we've done intermittently and not significantly. We don't look at this as necessary for public passage, and we don't have it on our current plan to address the condition of it. So, I think we meet that burden. For any reason, the public interest or convenience does not require the section to remain open to the public, or that is in public interest or convenience to close it, well, if we abandon and close that, we don't have to maintain it. So, that's a savings for taxpayers ultimately. Even small amounts can be considered by the board. I would suggest to you that all of the elements are there, and you can certainly consider the request of those who have attenuated access issues. You can consider that as part of your deliberation, but it would not carry the day. If you decide you want to go ahead and abandon this, you would be within your purview to do that. It meets all of the elements of the statute. Mr. Rogers?
Good morning. Mr. Rogers?
I was going to say, at first, like I said, I didn't have a problem with them coming down through there. They brought it to where it came to the board meeting and everything, so, and where I have to keep it private or not. They don't want it private, because they want to come through there on the tractor just to cut his grass down there, which he can go around the whole other way of the road and still get there. That's the whole problem where it came down to all of this, where they're mad, and now they're saying they don't want it to be, and they're talking about a water line, which I don't care if he comes down there and fixes the water line.
And remember, the water line is an easement, right? The other crews would say they have access to fix the water line.
They showed me an easement where he can come through the road. He can come through the road, I don't care. It's just, they're trying to make it seem like it's their road.
I have a question.
Well, it's the county's road, right? Mr. Gay?
On this road that we're talking about abandoning, how long is that base of property that is public, that we would want to abandon?
Probably like, I'd say like 40, 50 feet.
What?
I think it's longer than that. It's about 1,500, I think.
15, is it? Oh, I mean, probably like 100, maybe 100.
Where the blacktop or the public part stops, your private drive continues?
Yeah, it goes all the way. I mean, they haven't paved that side, they stopped paving it, but on the map, it shows it all the way down there.
All the way down.
All right, your private, where public access stops and your private drive starts, how far is that private drive? And the reason I'm asking is...
The private drive goes all the way down to his house, to where it's the other side of the store, but it's not connecting to the store. He has a gate up in front of his, where it goes to the store, he has a gate up right there.
What I'm thinking is, right now, if he wanted to, Greg, and hopefully he don't, but they're worried about a gate, he could put a gate right where the public access trunkets, right now. And it would, I mean, the easement, I mean, the easement would still be in effect, and...
He may be doing that to his jeopardy here.
I know, I mean, he would have to go, I mean, it would be removed. But what I'm saying is, if this is 250 foot long and we abandon it, then if he had malice in, I mean, he could just, right now, say, "Well, I'm going to put a gate up, or I'm going to do something to obstruct you going through here."
Well, I already called the police home about trespassing, and he already told me he couldn't come through there. Because they told me they was going to call the police on me about coming through their yard, and if I went through there, they're going to call on me, so I...
Man, y'all don't need to do that.
They took it there. I mean, I didn't care if they came through there or nothing.
All right, so Mr. Slay's going to kind of put this in perspective for us. Hang on, one second, bud.
Can he see it, though? Can they see it?
So, unless I have no idea what I'm talking about, which is very possible, we are standing in a direction, we are looking east, we are looking east.
What's the name of that road that we're looking at right now?
That right there is a continuation of Melody Lane, right here, where this picture is taken. The vehicle is in Melody Lane that's running north and south.
Where that vehicle sitting, is it gravel or...
It ends in front of it, basically. Where that vehicle sitting, is that gravel?
The trailer's right there.
Chip seal?
It's chip sealed. And the public section goes from the front end of this truck to about right there, and Mr. Rogers, I believe his driveway, does your driveway pick up where my finger is?
Oh, yeah, probably just a little bit.
It goes in here, and that's your driveway. That public section stops at about where Mr. Rogers' driveway starts. It's probably 200 feet, 250 feet, but it's public. We're maintaining it. It's got chip seal on it. What you're being asked to do is to abandon 250 feet that runs east and west.
Yeah.
You're not abandoning anything that has to do with the north-south orientation of Melody Lane, just the east-west. Is everybody clear about that?
Clear.
So, from about right here to wherever his driveway connects, all of that right there is chip sealed, every bit of that. That's public. We need to abandon it so that it's private. Abandoning the public part does not affect private easements, whether they're water line easements or access easements, whatever, it does not affect the right of individuals who hold an easement to go over that property.
So, that makes sense, but then by making it private, what the gentleman just was saying up there, if he puts a gate there, can a gate be allowed to be put in?
Well, I guess what he's saying is, he can put a gate, he can put a gate right now at the end of that road. You see what I'm saying? Without the board taking any action at the end of where that road stops, if that's his property...
At the end of it.
At the end of the road, right?
And then with blacktop or chip seal.
The end of the chip seal, blacktop or asphalt, or whatever it is, wherever that road stops, he can do that today without the board taking any action, because now it's private. This is the only strip, this 250 feet or whatever that is, that's the only part that's public. Does that make sense? That's the only part that's public. Where those piled up down there at the end?
The trailer and that busted morgue.
Yeah, that's private. That's not public.
If the easement is perfected and everything's right on it, I don't think he can put a gate up now or later.
Exactly.
So, I don't think that has anything to do with it.
So, you can't block the road from them using it?
Yeah, but if they have an easement, they don't have an easement.
At the end, he can do that now.
Yeah.
I always tell them... Unless they have some kind of legal easement.
If there is a valid easement for access, if there is a valid easement for access, and it's been recorded in the land records, and it has been executed by all the property owners, if that is in place and he blocks that, he is subject to being... I, I stand. This is not Chancery Court. We don't want to press access, private access issues. That is Chancery Court. You're in the wrong place to have the discussion. Can you do this? Can you do that in private? We are here today to talk about one thing. Should this board abandon for public maintenance purposes a two hundred and fifty-foot strip of currently public property, a road, should it abandon that so we don't have to maintain that anymore?
All right, Mr. Slade, ju- just so be sure I understand it right. Thank, thank you for your comments, Mr. Rogers. Just so I understand it right, this two hundred and fifty-foot strip right here, he can put a gate at the end of that right now where it sits, because it's private.
He can.
So all we're talking about is getting to the gate.
That's correct.
So at that point, that doesn't affect anybody else's neighbors. If they wanna get past that gate, they can go around the other side behind it and access it. So the only thing we're talking about, and I'm just gonna pretend like Mr. Rogers puts a gate at the end of that road. He puts that gate there. All we're saying is, you can't go two hundred and fifty feet to access that gate, right? Now, the issue with the easement or the water lines or whatever, they're still have easements to fix and work on and all that kinda stuff, and a Chancery Court can tell you that
Yep.
or give you authority with the National Guard to come out and allow you to, if you need to.
Yes.
We're talking about a two hundred and fifty-foot spot, basically, to the end of that road where it becomes Mr. Rogers' property that will access their property on the back end of that. But no one's property is getting cut off by doing this.
That's correct.
All right.
And, and I, we don't know what the underlying property ownership issues are here. I don't know what Mr. Rogers owns. I don't know what those folks own as a release of title. I don't know what the scope of their easement is. Those are not issues that we need to know about.
But by doing this, no one's property is getting blocked from our actions today.
Whatever their current access rights are will remain in place.
Gotcha.
If you abandon the public segment.
Do you understand that? So really, you can't shut them off?
Oh, yeah. I mean, if they got the easement, I'm gonna let them through. They showed it to me. I'll let them through.
So you can't, you can't put a gate up and shut them off?
Well, he, he can, he can on his own property. I mean, he can on his own property.
Yeah, on property.
Well, that's, that's gonna become.
This property might not go past.
It may not. Yeah, I don't know where it sits.
He can't even go out his, and he, if you keep going down, all the way down this road to the end of it, he has a fence up on the property where, where it connects to store road. And all that is, is grass. It's not even a road.
I got you. All right.
Nobody uses it.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right. Just so everybody understands, this is the strip of road that the county has abandoned. It's two hundred and fifty feet. It's not gonna block anybody's access to it. It doesn't affect anybody's easements. Those are all still in place and all current. Those are all good. That's a good one. All right. Mr. Slade, will you close that public hearing?
Yes, sir, unless, unless the board has other questions.
All right. Y'all good?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I'll make a motion to abandon that strip that we discussed and I guess the exact details of it. And seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? Mr. Slade, in that motion, you realize the stretch, stretch of road we're banning?
We, we'll actually ask Mr. Parker, uh, his survey crew to actually draw it out for us, and, and we'll make it a part of the minutes, and we'll make sure it gets in the land records. Oh, do, do you?
Let's don't go back down that road.
No, we're not. We're not.
All right. Any further discussion?
That's wonderful to hear at this point, Jay. I'm totally confused now.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So item pass. Thank you guys for coming in. All right.
Item D is, uh, is really a, a house cleaning measure. Uh, this, uh, you're granting authority to issue a refund check in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-four cents to Keesler Federal Credit Union in recognition that a homestead chargeback applicable to a prior property owner was incorrectly applied to PPI N three-five-oh-oh-five. You would be authorizing issuance of the check, obviously.
All right. So the board wish to entertain a motion to authorize the check?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item E, Mr. Slade?
Yeah. Ms. Renee's gonna help me with this one. Uh, we've got some language we're gonna look at. This is a discussion of and potential action regarding a potential amendment to the Rankin County Beer and Light Wine Ordinance that will a- address an additional beverage option request. Uh, the state of Mississippi through the Department of, uh, Alcohol Beverage and Beverage Control, AGC, uh, updated their regulations to allow for a type of beer and light wine product to be, uh, offered or served in a container uh, that is subject to being sealed with a top on it, uh, so that it can be taken out of a retailer and taken to a final destination. Uh, it is in the form of a frozen product, so it's like a frozen daiquiri type of product. Um, but it is a beer and light wine. It's not liquor. It's beer and light wine option. Uh, and, and so we are looking at, uh, amending the beer and light wine ordinance to account for that. Your current ordinance reads in subsection D, uh, you, you make it unlawful for anyone to offer, sell, dispense, or give beer and light wine to anyone in a quantity less than a four-pack accepting the sale of beer in kegs or the sale of light wine in seven hundred and fifty milliliter and one-point-five-liter container sizes. That the structure of your ordinance makes it so that the, uh, this frozen product, which the state of Mississippi says they are now authorizing to be sold by a retailer, the state has, your ordinance makes it impossible for the retailer to make that offering in its current format. They sell the product in a size that equates to a seven hundred and fifty-milliliter carton or a one-point-five-liter container, but it's, it's in, it's characterized in ounces and not milliliters. And so we're, we're going to propose that we adjust it. Renee, if you'll show us the next. So what we're saying is we're gonna keep that same language in your subsection D there that prohibits just what we've always prohibited as it relates to beer and light wine that's, that's offered in some other format. But to account for this frozen serving format, we are allowing that it can be lawful for retailers identified in subsection A to dispense a, and sell frozen light wine and frozen malt beverage products dispensed from a frozen drink machine in accordance with the Mississippi Department of Revenue Notice seventy-two-seventeen-oh-oh-three. That's the new regulations that Department of Revenue put in place. And such amendments or revisions thereto accepted and approved by us, retailers shall only use a frozen drink mixture that is provided by a light wine or malt beverage distributor that's licensed under the Department of Revenue. Each serving will be a minimum of the seven fifty or twenty-five fluid ounces. We, we upped it so that it would be consistent that what we want is something that's clearly going to the house. And it's subject, subject to being dispensed only by the retailer in a container with a tamper-evident seal cap so as not to be consumed until the consumer reaches their off-premise destination. Um, thi- this would track directly with municipalities who have a similar beer and light wine ordinance with us. These, this language is what they've updated their ordinance to accommodate this beverage option. This is how they do it. We've added one additional clarifier, uh, and this was in consultation with sheriff and with Paul Holly. We are saying clearly, the frozen dispensing machine or machines contemplated by the ordinance shall be situated by the retailer such that no customer has access to the machine. And that was so that we avoid a situation where a kid accidentally goes up to get a slushy and they end up with mom's slushy instead. So that makes it clear. Sheriff, is that seem reasonable? I think the retailers, by the way, there's really only one retailer that's approached us about this, and they're out of Starkville, so it's a local company. Uh, and they are, uh, expanding their operations to other parts of the state. They were instrumental in working with Department of Revenue to understand their process and to get the Department of Revenue comfortable that this would not significantly deviate from what we're already doing. It's just, it's frozen instead of liquid. Uh, and so, uh, I think your staff, uh, believes that this language would accommodate the request, and it provides for the safety, uh, that the law enforcement community would be looking for to prevent an, uh, a mistake, an accident. Uh, and so we're satisfied. If, if the board is of a mind to take action on it today, we have it set up to do so. If you prefer to wait, study it and think about it, we can do that at another date.
Sheriff's group.
Yeah, Sheriff? All right. So the board wish to, uh, entertain a motion?
Make motion to approve.
Motion to approve of Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item E passes.
Mr. President, if I may, can I request that we take items F and G together? They are essentially
We were ahead of you.
identical. Thank you. Uh, so my, my request is just simply authority for our sheriff's office to enter into an MOU with the FBI with respect to both the violent crimes task force and the safe streets ta- task force. Uh, under both MOUs, there is, uh, a provision that allows for our sheriff's costs to be reimbursed in the event there are federal funds. Nobody should be misled. If the FBI is not successful in securing funding to pay it, we won't be paid it. We'll have to eat that, but, uh, we feel good about the agreement.
Motion to approve.
All right. So motion to approve items F and G.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign?
I've got a, at least one matter in executive session to take you guys through, uh, and we'll give you a quick update at some point on legislation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Excellent job this morning. Mr. Hicks, thank goodness Mr. Slade shut it down, but item nine.
Item A is, uh, dealing with our community services renovation project. This is the ratification of approval to accept the, uh, certificate of substantial completion from JH&amp;H uh, for our community services building effective, effective, uh, March seventh of this year.
All right. So the board wish to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Calhoun?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the same sign? Item B, Mr. Hicks?
Um, item B is just a, a timing matter. It's why it's included on today's agenda. It's authority to pay registration fees for a couple deputy sheriffs to attend a training that begins April the third.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve of Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign? Mr. Hicks?
All right. Any questions on Monday's agenda?
See you none, then we'll be moving on. No, I'm just kidding.
I do have.
Go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
I, I, I'm pretty confident that I will not be here Monday. Katie will have it. She's gonna be having a baby.
What is the grandfather name? What is the grandfather name? Have we got that figured out?
Yeah, yeah. It, uh, it's a long one. Gaines Macbeth, Benelli.
What's your, what's your go-pa grandpa name?
Oh, oh, Champ.
Champ, that's what I thought it would be. Champion. World champ, world champion. All right. Anything else on the agendas, Mr. Calhoun, Morrison? Bishop?
I, I would like to thank the sheriff and the road department, the EOC, and all the voluntary fire departments for, we had a lot of brush fires yesterday and, and, uh, they did an excellent job, and thank y'all all.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Anything else additional business? Mr. Bishop, Mr. Gaines, Morrison, Mr. Calhoun? Nothing there. Mr. Slade, you said executive session?
Yes, sir. Acquisition of property, uh, personnel.
Okay.
I'd like to take the acquisition, uh, issue first, if I may. We have a guest who are gonna speak to the board on those matters.
An executive session. All right. So the board wish to entertain a motion for those two items? Executive session?
I'll make motion.
Motion of Mr. Calhoun? Seconded by Mr. Bishop.
Are we going to executive session?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, second.
All right. So seconded by Mr. Bishop. We're going to executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign? Then a motion to enter executive session, Mr. Calhoun?
Make motion and go in executive session.
Mr. Bishop?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign? So executive session. Thank you.